All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for June 23rd, 2020, if you would. Silence, all of your cell phones. And city clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen?
Here.
Commissioner Hartman?
Here.
Commissioner McGurk?
Here.
Commissioner Sacks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to have an invocation and a pledge, if you care to join us for the invocation, and then after you would remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. The flag is right behind us in that foyer back there, so we're going to turn for that. Before you give the invocation and we say the pledge, for those of you that are frequent visitors to our meetings and have come for a long time, you'll know Marty Danaher. He left us on Father's Day, on Sunday, longtime member of the community and came to many, many meetings and made his voice heard, so we'll certainly miss him and remember him tonight. So, if you would, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, and we just ask that you give us the grace to get over the loss of our friend. And we ask, Lord, that you continue to bless us and give us the directions and the way we must go to make the right decisions for our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Khalid, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir. One change, we'd like to move the city attorney's report right after the public participation.
Move up city attorney's report, so item 14, move it right after. Can we do it right after consent agenda, just in case there's staff here for that? Is that good? Does that work? Okay, so we'll do that as item, we'll move it up before item seven. All right. Any other changes?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. No announcements, so next item up is public participation. This is your chance to address the commission. Ask if you would, direct your comments to the commission. Approach this microphone right here, speak loud and clear so everyone can hear you, give your name and address for the record, and there's a three-minute time limit. If you don't abide by that, I don't know, we'll figure it out. Specifically for you, Scott.
That was just for Scott, I figured that was coming. So, let's see, a couple of things today. As a merchant on Canal Street, just wanted to comment on the fact that I thought Thursday night's street closure went very well. Some of my realtors were out there walking around the streets, seemed like it went effectively. Merchants seemed to think that it went well, seemed like the restaurants seemed to have picked up pretty good, and it seemed like people were obeying the social distancing rules pretty effectively. So, I wanted to commend you guys on putting that forth and at least giving it a try. It seems like it was pretty effective. But I'm here today as the chairman of legislative committee for the Board of Realtors. Yeah, it's just pulled another hat out of the box. I have handed out to Kelly an invitation to you guys. We have a webinar, Zoom call, if you will, on smart growth, coming up first of September, and it is a compilation of the National Association of Realtors and Florida Association of Realtors' observations on what the country's been doing in terms of growth. I think we're finally getting to the point now where we can talk about these kinds of things again. I noticed we had a lot of environmental discussions at the last meeting. I think it's time we start looking at what's going forward in the future, what's been happening with development over time. And so, this is just an opportunity. All the commissioners are invited, and certainly any of the citizens who would like to be involved as well. You just got a flyer that tells you how to log in and do a registration for me, if you will. But that was all I have for you today, and thanks very much for what you do. I would not want to have to be giving as much time and energy and effort as you had to, and thanks for keeping New Smyrna going throughout all this.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pete Thompson. I'm an attorney, and I have a client that we'd like to bring to your attention that we proposed a lease to Kelly with regard to 242 North Causeway. It's for a, it's called NSB Coastal Charities LLC, and we were looking at a market rent at $2,000 a month. And it would be initially for a five-year term, but obviously negotiable, and it would incorporate the existing boat and ski club lease and the safari lease, in the sense that both of those organizations would be welcome to continue to participate, as they have participated, with regard to their monthly meetings and, you know, I think, three or four annual events, something like that. So, we think this would be a good opportunity to, you know, to open up the use of the facility to other organizations within New Smyrna Beach area and outside that would also have charitable functions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you sharing that. And Kelly has that information?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Claudia Vanderhorst, 562 Aolian Drive, New Smyrna Beach. Let me touch that. Good evening, commissioners and city officials. We truly appreciate the opportunity to address the commissioners and city staff on the serious safety issues in our community due to the dramatic increase volume of construction in private vehicles, school buses, bus riders, pedestrians, and the congestion, speed, and safety concerns on the corner of Gibraltar and Aolian Drive due to the coastal woods development. I'm referring to an item that's on tonight's agenda, for this all-way stop sign. The electronic petition we submitted on May 12th, city commission meeting, with 34 signatures collected within five days, represents the level of concern of the safety hazard and the seriousness of our request to the city to restore safety to that intersection to what it was prior to the coastal woods development, where it was a dead-end street, an entrance and an exit to our 113 rooftops. It's now open thoroughfare to over 900 homes and all the traffic that comes with that. To our knowledge, prior to and since 2016, no traffic count tubes have ever been placed to measure the volume or the activity of traffic on Gibraltar at Aolian to and from Sugar Mill. The March 20th speed study that is, that was used to make a recommendation by city staff today is deficient in many areas. The location of the speed monitor device on Gibraltar was placed 500 feet west of Aolian Drive. Many of the vehicles using Gibraltar slow down to turn onto Aolian to enter our community. Therefore, the speed data does not correctly reflect the average speed. It will be decreased because we're slowing down to turn in. The March 2020 study also did not track the number of vehicles or the speed going east on Gibraltar towards Sugar Mill, past Aolian. The study only focused on westbound traffic. The date, this eastbound traffic is critical to understand and address the safety issue at that corner. In addition, the speed study completed in March took place after schools were closed and the state mandated stay-at-home order was issued. The speed monitor device could not have possibly captured or allowed city staff to correctly estimate all the pertinent data in real time, the three times each day school buses, the riders, the walkers, the parent vehicle volume waiting, speed activity, and private and commercial vehicle volume and speed every day at all hours. In addition, our walking paths have been connected, so we've got pedestrians, walkers, bikers, all hours of the day. That couldn't have been recorded, as it normally happens without the pandemic. In addition, two of the three FDOT traffic and speed study manuals are outdated. The manual on uniform traffic control devices was last updated in 2012. The manual on uniform traffic studies was last updated in 2016, all prior to the development of coastal woods. So, the data is not current and shouldn't be used. All before the coastal woods development was begun, before the dead-end street-
Cloney, sorry, your time is up. Really close.
Real close.
All right, two seconds.
In closing, we respectfully ask for the commission and the city officials to recognize the deficiencies in the data of the March 2020 study, and either approve the all-way stop and crosswalk markings as requested for Aolian, Sparta, and Gibraltar, based on the real-time factors presented to you by residents, or table this matter until the pandemic has reached a point where we can do a full traffic study, a full speed study in both directions, and assess all of the data in real time, as opposed to what we're dealing with today.
Got it.
Last thing is, at the end, we would appreciate being involved in the process to solve the safety issue, as we're the ones who brought it to the table to begin with.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up. Yes, ma'am, come on down. If anyone wants to speak after her, there's plenty of open seats. You can grab one of those, you can be quick to the mic.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Ratigan, and I came to present once again issues in relation to airport noise, the flight training noise here out of our airport. For nearly 15 years, I have come before this commission on numerous occasions to plead for relief from the onslaught of noise and aggravation due to greatly increased flight training and the shifts and changes to the flight training patterns since the tower was built and all of the traffic was concentrated to the west side of the airport. The past two to three years, I have spent a great deal of time meeting with the now city manager Khalid, and with the airport manager, and the only two flight schools who would bother to show up. I have been to a couple of airport advisory board meetings to also bring attention to this issue and the unending aggravation of having 60 to 120 to even 150 planes per hour over our property and home. I have made several requests of relief and given lots of recommendations to make subtle shifts to the patterns in order to get relief. The current voluntary noise abatement procedures are neither adequate nor adhered to anyway. The more I complain or plead for relief, the more we have been targeted and made to suffer. Instead of shortening or narrowing the patterns and reducing the number of planes in the pattern, the more the patterns have shifted to make sure nearly every plane, whether itinerant or in a training pattern, go over our home over a mile west of the airport. In spite of the few neighbors who don't seem to mind the increased traffic, mostly because they're not home all day to suffer through it, or they are deaf, there are many in our neighborhood and in the surrounding neighborhoods who are in distress over the increased noise. The issue has neither decreased, eased up, or waned in any way over the past 14-plus years. To the contrary, it has steadily incre- excuse me, increased and become more stressful than ever. Last summer, I and an attorney met via phone with Khalid and the city attorney to make the city aware of their obligation to address the needs of all of their citizens and surrounding neighborhoods in regards to the issue of the noise of the city-owned airport. In regards to the issue of the noise that the city-owned airport has created by building a control tower, which has turned this airport into a flight training center. Any and all municipally-owned airports have the right and obligation to utilize the proprietor's exception granted by the FAA to meet the needs of its citizens and are actually federally mandated and required to do so. The stress that the past 14-plus years of aggravating noise has caused and has a major impact on my health and well-being, and that of many others, can no longer be ignored nor rebated. This issue must be addressed and relief provided as soon as possible. I would like the opportunity to meet, even telephonically, with each of the commissioners as soon as possible, to present in greater detail the exact issues and concerns, and to seek and present some possible resolutions.
Thank you. I'm happy to meet with you. You can call me. City manager has my number. I know you have his number, so I'm happy to give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wish to speak? Seeing none. Thank you. Next item, oh, the one thing on the lease, I know we've got that workshop on the 30th, right? So, I'd assume that'd probably be the best time to talk through this, as we talk through those other lease issues. All right, consent agenda, two items. Gentlemen, anything to pull? Anything to pull?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
No, we had anything to pull. City clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Items A and B are approved. Next item up, Carrie, we're going to move the city attorney report, remember, to this spot. So, we'll start there.
I have two items for you tonight. First is a settlement agreement with Dahmerin Inc., which is the operator of the Bottoms Up Club at 2520 North Dixie Freeway. This, the attorney for the property owner is here, Larry Walters. He approached me approximately a year ago. There's a current code provision that would require them to cease operations by October 1, 2020. He pointed out a number of potential arguments he could raise, an illegal challenge in regards to this ceasing of operations based on the adoption of our ordinance in 2005. We've reviewed that internally. We believe one or more of those issues has merit, and so we have worked out a settlement agreement where the property owner has waived any legal challenges to the ordinance with an extension of six years, and at the end of the six years, it becomes a conforming use with a voluntary limitation on the ability to do live entertainment in there. So, the agreement is before you tonight with a recommendation from the city attorney's office for approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments of the attorney, or do I have a motion to approve this agreement as presented?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, hearing no discussion, city clerk, read color roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
No. All right, item passes. Did you have one other thing?
Yes. Last Thursday, at our charter review workshop, there were some more changes that were directed to be made. I emailed those to you, but I wanted to explain them as we went along. In front of you, on your little mini dais, you have a packet that looks like this, and I just wanted to explain, we moved the annexation section from Section 1.101A to Section 1.05. It starts on page four, so that's just simply moving the organization of that. Section 4.04, page 17 of your handout, was dealing with the clerk's qualifications, so we created a B based on existing language in the job description. Section 6.04 on page 21, that deals with the sale of, sale or lease of city land, and the revised language states any transfer of ownership or lease lasting longer than 10 years of any land owned by the city of New Smyrna Beach that has been designated by a supermajority of the city commission as environmentally, culturally, or historically significant shall only occur if after a voter referendum, a majority vote of the registered voters in the city of New Smyrna Beach approves such a transfer or lease. Transfer or lease. And I wanted to point out that in our historical charter, there was a provision similar to this regarding the sale of marsh land. That, at some point in time, it was moved from the charter to the code of ordinances. And when you look at the Florida statutes, it talks about, there's approximately five categories of items that require a voter referendum to be changed. The sale of land provision was moved because it was not in one of those five categories. So, we do have existing language in our code of ordinances regarding the sale of marsh lands. So, what I've done is I've drafted the language we talked about last Thursday, but I also wanted to point out to you that if you wanted to amend the existing marsh land provisions, you wouldn't need to wait until November to do that. You could, it's two readings and an ordinance, and we could implement something like this, or something that would address, you know, lands along the Turnbull Creek or water bodies, et cetera. Also, Section 8.02 on page 29 dealt with the historical language of utilities. Commissioner terms, that language has been removed. Section 8.09 regarding the submission of the UC's budget to the city by June 1 has been changed to July 1. The only outstanding item I have is the UC sale of land item, and the attorney for the UC and I are still working that out. I anticipate having that language for you so that we can talk about it at the June 30th meeting, which is next Tuesday. But I believe with that, you know, I'd point to your consideration regarding that, you know, just make sure 6.04 is really what you want, and then the remaining outstanding item of the UC sale of land, I think with that, we're in a somewhat final form with this document.
Okay. And so, the next steps on this, just so we're clear, so we've had, you know, multiple public engagement. We had a whole charter review. We had two workshops. We talked about each of these. So, you know, I know this is not necessarily on the agenda, but we're trying to just, trying to now get this over the finish line. So, you mentioned the June 30th workshop, and at that point, what are you going to need from us on this document?
So, June 30th is actually going to be a special meeting now.
It's actually not a workshop, I'm sorry, yeah.
And so, at that point, I'll need some final direction from you all on if it's in final form, how many ballot questions. I know we've talked about one, but I'll need that official direction at a meeting, and then I would be working on the ordinance coming up with the 75 words for the ballot question, and that would come back to you at your budget meeting at the end of July, would be first reading of that ballot language ordinance.
Okay. So, at that meeting, at the next meeting, we need to have, because we just got this before the meeting, I think it was in our email inbox, but, so we need to have read this, been comfortable with it, give you direction on, at the June 30th meeting. Is there any last tweaks that we need to make here? And preferably don't do it at that meeting. Try to give you a heads up, if possible. But, and if it's substantive, obviously we'll have to all talk about it, but if it's scribner, you know, let Carrie know so she can make it. So, that's at the June 30th meeting, and we'll also be giving you direction at that time on ballot, do we want one or multiple ballot questions, and that's it, right? Those are the two decision points, basically, at that June 30th meeting. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't want to have, since this was a non-agenda item necessarily, I don't want to have just this huge in-depth discussion on the charter. We also had, you know, the past two weeks, hours and hours and hours, but any, any quick comments on this item for Carrie tonight. Go ahead.
Yes, Carrie, could you describe in layman's terms, our previous discussion with Counselor Cloud regarding the sale of lands, and we discussed the 800-some-odd acres north of Walmart, that is supposed to go to a negotiation? It seemed-
No, no, no. So, we're working out language that would be acceptable to both parties. We're anticipating, you know, something like the Bush No provision, where if the UC wants to sell that land, it would come to the city commission for their vote, and whether it's supermajority or majority, but we'd have a provision that would specifically deal for, if that situation ever arises, this is how it would be handled.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Reading over the 6.04, I think that wording is very good. I like the way that's set up. Do we have to make any mention in there as to how the city commission would establish that list of the sensitive lands? Or can we just do that by ordinance? Because I know there's other ordinances that we have to amend.
Right. I would recommend we do it by ordinance.
Thank you.
We could set that precedent.
Good.
Any comments? All right, no other comments on that item? Any other things for city attorney report?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we are now at item 7A, requesting city commission approval to execute an option agreement for the potential purchase of parcels 80, 91, and a remnant parcel as part of the voter-approved Turnbull Creek Land Preservation Bond Program. Brian?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kelly, if you could please pull up page 101 of the agenda packet. This is going back to January. If you recall, the commission gave us direction to proceed with the next steps for acquisition for six Priority One parcels of the Turnbull Creek program, with those parcels concentrated right around the State Road 44 area. Later on in April, the commission gave authorization to hire the North Florida Land Trust. Rebecca Perry is here tonight, and just a few more comments about the property, and then she'll describe the option agreement as before you for approval. So, what we're talking about is parcels, we call them 80 and 91 in our packet, and those are owned by Seastar Realty and Neil Harding, and those are the top-ranked parcels on that Priority One group list. The subject property that, for this option agreement, is 10.08 acres. It's currently vacant, and it actually consists of three parcels. Parcel 80 is 9.14 acres, Parcel 91 is 0.5 acres, and then there's a remnant parcel that's 0.44 acres that was, that was missed in the initial review of the 100-so parcels, but that remnant parcel is surrounded by the other properties. It really couldn't be used or accessed in any way, so it made sense to include that. It's under common ownership. So, those three properties comprise the 10.08 acres. There's approximately, of those 10.08, 7.5 acres of uplands, 2.6 acres of wetlands. A formal wetland determination has been approved by the Water Management District for this property. Property has a very thick tree canopy. It's many historic and specimen trees. There's a better map there of, those are the six priority parcels, and we're really looking at the bottom group there, 80 and 91. Whoops. We can stay on that page right there, Kelly, if you could just zoom out of that, if you would, please. So, last year, Seastar Realty submitted a site plan for this site. It was a proposed boat sales and service facility, had a 15,000-square-foot building. That went back and forth to staff for a couple of reviews, and then it stopped. So, nothing has been approved, no permits have been issued. There are no vested rights for any development on this site at this time. City had two independent appraisals prepared. Both of those are in your agenda packet. The first was for 1.256 million. The second was for 1.415 million. And then the option agreement, that's before you provide the city the option to purchase the property for an even 1.2 million. So, that, that purchase price is lower than both appraisals were. So, that's been signed by the seller, and that agreement was unanimously approved by the Turnbull Creek Land Preservation Committee at their meeting just last week on the 15th. So, I'm going to hand it off to Rebecca now. She's going to talk about what's in the agreement and what the next steps are in our process.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name's Rebecca. I'm with the North Florida Land Trust, and I just want to say we're really happy to be working with you guys on this project. So, yes, the option agreement, signed by the seller, what that means is that the seller is committed to selling the property, but the city has the option to buy it. So, you don't have to buy it until you've completed all of your due diligence, and it comes back before you for approval. As part of the due diligence, we'll be obtaining additional title work. I have some title work that I've started to review, but we need to get some more information on a lot of the things on there. We'll complete a survey, and on that survey, any encumbrances that are on the property will be identified on the survey, so we'll know how those title exceptions will affect the property and your future use of it. And we'll also get an environmental site assessment of that. The current option expires on October 30th, so during that time period, we'll be able to get all the due diligence that's needed. It'll come back to the commission for approval, and then from there, if it's approved, it will be, we can close within 30 days of that approval. That's basically the process. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I just want to point out, in terms of the funding, right now, we have a half million dollars in this fund. We have not received the reimbursement from the state, which is 3.5 million. They have promised us that we will have it by August, so by August, around August, you will have about $4 million. So, hopefully that we could work with them out and make the closing sometime after August and before the October 31st.
Okay. Discussion by the commission, or Vice Mayor, go ahead. Questions, comments?
As I was looking over the material that was, that was provided, I noticed that there was some right-ofaways, and it wasn't specified as to who they were granted to, both for access and for stream maintenance. Your follow-up will define as to who they are granted to?
Yes, you're right. There's, there's a drainage easement that is to Volusia County that I did locate already, but there are some other ones that are only referenced in a deed, and there's no reference as to who actually owns that easement. So, that's the further title investigation that I need to do. I had looked into using a local title company, wanted to sort of keep it local if we could, but they weren't able to complete everything we needed. So, I'm going to go with a company that works with the state of Florida, that we work often. They work with the city of Jacksonville. They're typically used to doing government projects, so we'll get more in-depth into all those exceptions and see how they'll impact the property.
Okay, and there will be an environmental analysis, see if there's any buried tanks or whatever, pollution onsite?
Yes, yes. There's onsite, as well as a radius search that looks all around the entire property, so there's an extensive investigation that'll be done.
Okay. I kind of knew those answers, but the important question is- I kind of knew those answers, but the important question is, the cost for those, are any of those costs included in what we are in a contract between us and you, such as the environmental assessments?
We would not...
Or the survey?
Yeah. So we would contract out the environmental site assessment, and those range from $1,700 to $3,000 for Phase One, if you wanted to round numbers. The survey as well, we contract out for that. So I haven't gotten those bids yet, but I'll certainly provide those to Brian, and he can have a look at those.
Okay. Who would pay for that?
That's would be, yeah, that would be by the City.
Okay, so that's not in our contract with you.
Oh, no, sir.
They're extra costs.
Correct.
So it would be my position to the Commission that these are very valuable projects or properties, we should go forward with it. If we're going to pass a motion, we should consider that we're going to have to budget funds for it and do it in a timely fashion, so that we can proceed with the project and meet our deadlines of October. And being we're not going to be around to do that in July, would there be any need to pass any motions today on that? Carrie?
Well, the, before us tonight is the, is the motion to execute the option agreement to start the process. Are you saying anything in addition to that?
You could authorize City staff to proceed with getting the environmental site assessment, the survey, those items.
Okay, so we should include that in there too, because we all know how time constraints tend to show up at the last minute, so I just want to be ready.
I appreciate that.
And hopefully the state will come along and give us the money they owe us.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this item? Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Ma'am, is there FDOT right-of-way along the creek in that area?
I didn't see one along the creek in that area. I'm sure there's something along the road, but I didn't notice anything along the creek. But again, there are a lot of, a lot of different easements on the survey that they've provided us already, so I need to further investigate that. But DOT did not stand out when I looked through the title work.
There's some evidence that there may have been dumping of toxic materials in that area. How is that mitigated, and who would, the City would have to pay for that mitigation?
Well, that would be, so when the, when the Phase One environmental site assessment is completed, they will walk the entirety of the property, and if they notice staining on trees, or any, you know, oil, or any dumping, that's something that they're going to say is an environmental condition that needs to be investigated further. So that would come back to you, and then we would either move forward with a Phase Two, which is much more detailed investigation, and you don't have to close. If you decide that that remediation is too much for you, then you would just not exercise the option, and, and the sale would stop at that point.
Or in the alternative, they could reduce their price.
Or they could clean it up, or, yeah, there's, there's other options in the contract.
Thank you.
That's okay. How are you compensated?
How are we compensated?
Your organization?
We have an agreement for services with the City, and so we will, we'll invoice you essentially at the end of the transaction.
And one last question. Do we have to manage these lands as we would our original purchase? Do you know?
You will, you will own the property, yes, so you will be in charge of managing it.
Well, I think, just to clarify, this wouldn't have the, we're using grant funds on the Turnbull Trace property. That has an additional set of requirements. These properties would not have those requirements.
Thanks. Thank you.
Because they don't have the fine, they're not fine.
There's no FCT grant.
Yeah. They don't have the grant funds from the state like we had last time. This is purely our, you know, our citizens' money. So we have the duty to maintain it, just as we do any other property we have, to whatever level we would choose.
Thanks. So Mayor, after a motion on this item, we'd like to talk very briefly about the remaining parcels while we have Rebecca here, to maybe get some direction there as well.
Okay. I want to go back real quick to the question Commissioner Sacks. That's something we approved, right? The operating contract with, with North, yeah. I mean, that was before us. I can't cite the date off the top of my head, but that's something we all voted on, so. Okay. If there's not any other questions, do have a motion on this item?
I make that motion.
Do you want to add any of those other things you wanted to add?
Yes, the things we discussed to give staff direction. First of all, to exercise the option, give staff direction to come up with a list of other costs that we're going to have to meet for the environmentals and the surveys, so that we're prepared to authorize that expenditure.
I, I think our intent here was to, I'm sorry, the individual expenditures are very low and don't reach a threshold that they would need to come back to the Commission. If I could make a suggestion would be to allow us to proceed with those, and we estimated the total would be less than $20,000. So if, just for clarity's sake, if you could, would recommend, because we, we would want to proceed with those activities, to maybe set that as a maximum amount, or say, say 25, just on, just to, with some cushion.
Not to exceed 25.
Which is the threshold anyway, right? So, yeah.
Okay, I'll restate my motion, simply to approve signing the option agreement.
Okay. Motion to approve is presented. I have a second. Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Sack. I'm going to do it again. Y'all swap sides on me for a few meetings, and I think it threw off my cadence here. Yeah. Keep calling him Sacks, and anyway. All right. I had a motion and a second. No other discussion. City Clerk, if you'd call her, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it's been approved. I just want to say something real, real quick. In my experience, anytime the government spends a large amount of money, if it's anywhere near where you live, people start raising eyebrows. So I just want to clarify, although I live slightly, you know, maybe a mile and a half to the southwest of that site, never stepped foot on it, no ownership interest in it, never have, nobody in my family has, couldn't tell you a thing about that property. So just for full disclosure, before the rumors start flying. Yes, Brian?
So just on the remaining four parcels, we are essentially at an impasse with our negotiations, that the sellers are seeking roughly double what the highest appraised value is. So we would be looking for direction. We don't have to get it tonight, this is just, just letting you know where we're at, whether to continue pushing with those, knowing that we really can't go much higher than the highest appraised value, or do we shift our focus back to that Priority Two, which is the southern group? There was about 17 parcels there, which we, you know, we discussed at a previous meeting. So we, I only bring that up because the Commission expressed urgency to move forward with this program, and we want to let you know we are doing that, but we are at an impasse right now.
Okay. Comments? I saw Vice Mayor's hand, then I'll come to you.
Just a quick question for Brian.
Go ahead.
Brian, are we, is, has the committee and the Commission, is our will to just purchase lands around the Turnbull Creek at this point?
That was the directive, I think, of the, that's all we can do, per the ballot language. It's, because it called out Turnbull Creek watershed or something, so I'd be real, I'd be real hesitant to get much, much out of that watershed, so. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I think we should move on to the next section and tell the people in the first section, we're looking elsewhere, but we're always open to negotiations.
I agree with that. Commissioner?
I agree, but I'd also ask that you and Commissioner Clody not speak so close to the mic, because it's really getting feedback, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that better for the audience? Can y'all still hear? All right. I'll try that. Sorry.
I agree.
About the mic or the land?
Mic.
Both. All right. Last time they were yelling at us for not being close enough, so. All right. Brian, you got, got your direction?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Item 7B, regarding input for the establishment of a local truck route and related regulations in the Flagler Avenue vicinity. Brian?
Yes, this is the third step of our three-step process to address truck traffic in the Flagler Avenue area. As, just as a reminder, step one was establishing the loading and unloading zones, those are in. Step two is the ordinance that we passed that prohibited delivery trucks from stopping on Flagler Avenue and several surrounding streets. So this is to consider, the third step is a possible truck route. And Kelly, if you could please pull up map, or Agenda Packet, page 316, it's a map of the proposed truck route. There's really two methods to consider that are covered here, and we can do one or both. We're recommending both, and I'll go through those briefly. So method one is identify a designated truck route. And when we pull up the map, that would be where trucks are limited to Flagler Avenue from Peninsula to South Atlantic, and then down South Atlantic from Flagler to Third, from South Peninsula, from Flagler to A1A, and then that short segment of Third Avenue from A1A to South Atlantic. So basically have a loop for trucks, and that would be your designated truck route. We would have to incorporate necessary exemptions to that truck route, and those would include things like emergency vehicles, government, utility vehicles, and operation on what's called the street of destination. So resident has a furniture delivery, or a moving truck coming, you can't prohibit trucks from reaching those points of destination, but all other trucks would have to stay on the route, and they would have to take the shortest distance to that destination and back to the truck route. So, so that's, that's the more traditional truck route. The second method is what we have in kind of the red dash lines, is, that's where we designate certain local roads as being prohibited for heavy trucks. And this is what we already have in place on Myrtle Avenue between Canal and State Road 44. We define heavy trucks as having two or more rear axles. So right now, what's shown on this map is proposed for, you know, Florida Avenue from Peninsula to North Atlantic, Jessamine from Pine to South Atlantic. It has been suggested to add Pine Street and Cooper Street between those two red lines running from Jessamine to Florida. That could be done, we would support that. Exempt trucks would be permitted on these streets, but it would be very limited, for example, to only government and utility trucks, and perhaps certain point of destination if somebody was moving, but you couldn't cut through these routes to reach a different point of destination. So you could do just these, just the red, if you only had certain streets that you really had a problem on, or you can do both, the truck route and the truck prohibition. We are recommending both. You know, one concern with truck restrictions is that possibly pushing the trucks onto other streets, you know, that are equally undesirable. So other considerations, the blue are DOT roads. We cannot restrict trucks on the DOT roads, so those are shown in blue on the map. The, and they would, the designated truck route would be two-way traffic. I know some have proposed, you know, requiring it to be one-way, very difficult to do that, difficult to enforce as well. So we'd recommend this loop being a two-way route. If the Commission wanted to support this, the next step would be to bring back an ordinance, which would, and we looked at a lot of other cities that have truck routes, there's a lot of good models out there, we would bring that back and lay out all those rules. So, here for any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
On the map, the, the red lines are very good. First of all, I think we should do both methods on the prohibition. One thing I would say is the red line routes should also include Cooper, because Cooper has a long history of being used by trucks. It does have an occasional sign on it now, saying they're not prohibited. City did an extension reconstruction where actually placed five traffic calming islands in the middle of the road, yet I get a lot of calls from residents of that street, and the, and the cross-streets to Cooper, that, that say they really get a lot of really heavy trucks that cause their buildings to shake, so on and so forth. So I think we should include that, because it's obviously a path of convenience for the truckers. So we would just emphasize that they shouldn't be there.
And you're, just for clarity, because I think Brian had mentioned Cooper and Pine between the two red lines, I think you're saying Cooper all the way out to Third Ave?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, because that's the shortcut they take now. The, the other item I have is, right now, on Florida Avenue, we have an occasional problem with a tour bus parking on the street. As written, would the ordinance prohibit that?
It would, if you restricted truck traffic and it wasn't a point of destination, we'd have to work with Hampton Inn. We haven't got the details on that yet, exactly how it's operating, but that would be subject to this. It would definitely be restricted.
Oh, it would restrict them primarily because they have the dual axles on the back?
They would have to use the truck route as, they have legal access to the property on the truck route.
Okay. I'm sure you can work out the details.
They park there for, like, overnight, or they park there and go on a quick tour? Or what's the tour bus?
Sometimes they stay there long periods of time. Sometimes they park there for four or five hours, and they leave the motors running. And we all know how narrow Flagler is, and sometimes even park on the sidewalk there, because it's so narrow.
Florida.
I just want to make sure that it is, it is addressed, whatever way is...
We would reach out to management, Vice Mayor as well.
Yes, I appreciate that. I know when their site plan was approved, they do have a rear entrance that is gate-controlled. Perhaps they could solve that problem by addressing their gate-management issue and get the bus on private property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions for staff on this item? Oh, Commissioner Sacks?
Comment. Saxon, Brian, please, quickly, Saxon has become an ever-increasing problem with large semi-trucks of all kinds. It's a county road. Can we do anything about that? Include that in this proposed route, or do we have to go back and revisit that for South Beach?
Saxon being a county road, we'd have to consult with the county, and they would have to enact the ordinance to restrict trucks on their road.
Can we give direction now, or do I have to wait for a separate time to request staff to have discussions with the county regarding Saxon?
I'd propose, just for simplicity, let's get this item closed out, and then after that, if we want to see if we've got consensus, to give staff that direction on the second item, let's just, let's keep it.
That's fine.
This one's so close, I'd hate to get that, this one convoluted with that, so let's get this one, see where this one lands. Any other comments or questions on this item?
So I could support the truck route and the two red lines, and include Pine and Cooper between the red lines. I think if you restricted them at that area, there's really no other way for them to go down the rest of Cooper. If that seems to be a problem later on in the, in the future, then we can readdress it at that time. But if you restricted their route already, and you've made Cooper or Pine a red line up to the, what's the first street? Up to Jessamine, then it's going to be difficult for them to get around those small streets to get back on to Cooper, to exit out anyway. So if they stay within their truck route, and we prohibit them on the areas that we've already discussed, I think that will probably suffice in the long run.
My suggestion is to make it all the way from Flagler to Second, Cooper and Pine.
Cooper and Pine all the way from Flagler to Second, okay. I mean, at that point, I would just do Cooper all the way out to Third, then.
Pine, Pine and Cooper, Cooper does go out to Third, but Pine does not. It goes to Second.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, I would do Cooper all the way out if I, if we did that. I could support Cooper, I, going all the way out to Third Avenue, because I, I do think that will be used as a cut-through, and to me, while we're doing all this training and reconfiguring how people work, I think it's easier to learn it all at once, rather than try to change it, and then, oh, that isn't working, we make another change. So I'd say if we're going to do it, if we think it might be a problem, let's, let's do it now. If it, if that causes problems, I think it'd be easier to relax than it would be to try to, try to go back and add enforcement later. And that's such a small section between Flagler and Jessamine, I'm afraid they'll just use it anyway, and then they'll go the rest of the way. And if we didn't catch them in that little section, then we can't really, so I'd be inclined to do the entire thing. I think Pine's a little bit different layout, so I would defer to the motion maker, I'll support whatever on Pine. Definitely between the red lines, but I don't know if the rest of it's an issue, so. All right, so the question before us is to give staff direction to basically establish these ordinances and bring them back to us, so do you have any motion for staff?
If necessary, I'll make that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Approve the plans put forth by staff, and with the addition of... Approve the plans put forth by staff with the addition of Cooper extending out to Third and Pine between the red lines.
Okay, had a motion to approve as submitted with the addition of Cooper all the way to Third and Pine between the red lines as proposed by staff.
Question, it starts at Florida or it starts at Flagler? Cooper and Pine?
Pine's between the red lines, goes between Jasmine and Florida, and on Cooper, it extends from Flagler to Third.
From Flagler to Third, not from Florida to Third?
Correct.
Okay. Had a motion, do I have a second?
Second, the motion.
Have a second. Any other discussion? City Clerk, if you'd call the role, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And to staff, really, I mean, we've put a lot on staff. I hope folks realize how much we have asked of staff over these past few months in difficult times, and they're churning out high-quality work, and we recognize it and appreciate it. So, thank you all. Item C, requests for the review of the result of a traffic study to evaluate the potential for an always-stop at the intersection of Gibraltar and Aeolian Drive. Brian?
Yes, Kelly, if you could please pull up page three twenty-nine of the agenda packet, it's a map of the intersections, an aerial view. This item goes back to the May twelfth meeting, it was a Zoom call. Commission considered a petition request to install stop signs at Gibraltar and Aeolian Drive, which would make the intersection always-stop. Currently, there's only stop control on the southbound Aeolian side approaching Gibraltar Boulevard. So, the commission requested staff perform an engineering evaluation, and we had our traffic engineering consultant, Ted's, performed an always-stop analysis of the subject intersection, and that is included in the staff report. As we discussed before, due to COVID-19, the traffic volumes that have been there the last few months are not representative of what they would be under normal circumstances. So, while we did go out and perform field counts on one day, for this study, we relied on a projection, and that was using Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines for traffic coming out of the subdivision, as well as looking at coastal woods and build-out. So, build-out being all homes in, all commercial done, we have apparent traffic studies, we use that data to project the traffic at that intersection. What that determined is, based on the volumes, is that the always-stop is not warranted by the numbers. And it's really the volume coming out of the subdivision on the Aeolian, those volumes are too low to warrant an always-stop. It's not close by the numbers. As many are of these requests that you see for multi-way stops is the low-volume intersection, it's a very high threshold to meet the MUTCD warrants. This one does not. So, Ted's recommendation was to, that the traffic control there remain in its current condition, and be glad to take any questions on that.
Okay. Any comments, questions on this item?
Brian, do you have the speed counts for Gibraltar?
We do, we do. We had, the police department did a speed study, and they collected data at the intersection just to the west. The speed data doesn't really fit into the MUTCD warrants for the stop condition. So, it really looks at volumes. Minor street and major street, you know, is there enough volume to require stops? Now, the one thing we didn't do that we can maybe do in the fall, hopefully the fall, is to go back on a typical school morning and evaluate whether there are field conditions present that would warrant engineering judgment recommending an always-stop. That is the one item that we were not able to determine now.
So, if no one else is going to speak, I'll say, you know, I, if, what I'm hearing is, like so many other of these that have come before us, is that the data doesn't align with what the perception is from, at least we've heard from one, I've got a few others in my inbox, you know, from what those people that live with it on a daily basis are saying. And I can relate to that, you know? I live in an intersection that I wish had a traffic light, and FDOT won't put one there. And, you know, I'm the mayor of this town, and no, I can't get a traffic light at the end of my own road. So, I can appreciate that, you know, feeling like you're kind of bumping into that brick wall of, you know, but I live this, I can tell you what's, or I think that I know best, and I can tell you what's needed, but, you know, some other authority doesn't see that. So, I would say, to me, I know there's no action really required tonight, for me, this door isn't closed. If there's something we missed, if there's, you know, we do it, we collect data at a different time, or, you know, we're able to evaluate the conditions, you know, boots on the ground at a different time, I'm open to hearing about that. I think in other cases where I've seen success, it's been, you know, this real, you know, the chambers have been filled up with people, and because of COVID, you know, that's obviously not going to happen in this case. So, you know, to me, this isn't a closed door, I would be open to coming back if, you know, new evidence or conditions change, but that's where I'm at. All right. So, it says on mine, there's no formal action, this is just a report, so we're just moving on if there's no other comments. Item D, consider the approval of a construction contract change order number three, fire sprinkler system for the City Hall annex. Michelle, hey, Michelle?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're here tonight, again, for change order number three, to consider a fire sprinkler system for the City Hall annex facility. Little backstory here, during the design phase in 2017, the project was designed under the 2017 Florida Building Code Sixth Edition for Existing Buildings, as well as Chapter Twelve for Historic Building Codes in 2015 Life Safety Code NFPA 101. Based on the combination of these design codes and requirements, the previous city building official directed the design team to just pursue a two-hour fire separation between the occupancy classifications. We have two occupancy classifications inside the building. The assembly, which is the future chambers, which was once the church, again, it's church space to assembly, and then the office space, which was original, is being converted to business. So, between those two, instead of sprinkling the building because the occupancies were going to be below three hundred occupants, based on the design phase that we were in, the decision was to forego a fire sprinkler system for that building, again, given its historic designation and that we were under the occupancy number. However, during a final review with our city's newest building official, new fire chief and new fire marshal, the occupancy calculations were revisited, and we have found that in the assembly area, we are approaching the three hundred occupancy max, which will require a fire sprinkler. It has a lot to do with fixed seats and non-fixed seats. So, as you see, and what we're used to, is our chairs can move around, it allows us to set the space up differently. If we remain in that setup, we trigger the threshold of the three hundred occupants. We can put fixed seats and we stay below it, so we're just on that fine line there with the occupant count in the assembly area. So, it has been suggested strongly by our team, as well, to pursue a full sprinkler system for the facility, to better provide for public safety, flexibility for public seating, and to protect our wonderful future city asset. The total cost being presented by the contractor to install this system is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three sixty-six and sixty-seven cents. Sixty-seven point two percent of this would be funded by the dedicated project contingency that we do have available, with the remaining thirty-two point eight percent being funded by the building fund. If this does get approved this evening, again, the current project carries two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three sixty-one in available contingency, and we would then be left with one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen, if approved, for future unforeseen conditions that we can handle. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mayor, if I may just add, just before you, this item has been discussed with staff for probably the past two and a half months, including the building official and the fire marshal. So, this number that you have before you tonight, that wasn't the initial number that was submitted. So, I want to give staff credit for negotiating the number and bringing it down to this number right now, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff on this item? Not do have a motion on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Hartman?
Number fifteen is temporary facilities and utilities, power, water, and toilets. Those are already on-site, why are we being charged again for them?
It's a very good question. It's been fun negotiating this one for the last two months. So, when we can't get, if it's not a unit price contract item, if we don't already have it in our contract, and we can't reach, cannot reach an agreed-to lump sum, then our third option is Option C in our contract to break out labor, materials, temporary facilities, and then their overhead and profit. And that even goes so far to include social security and insurance for their employees. It's in our construction contract language that they are owed that particular line item as a result of this item.
Would it have been possible to sprinkle just the assembly section of the building and not the office space? Did you look at that option?
We did request that, we never got a response back for that, to be quite frank with you. We asked for it to be split like that. I'd almost, I think I'd have to trigger the fire marshal and the building official to see if that would keep us compliant. It would still probably require the two-hour fire separation, I would imagine. It would protect the assembly, but there are credits inside this change order, the one twenty-five would be greater if, we're reducing wall separation, reducing it all to one hour, all the doors are being reduced to one hour. So, I'm not the proper person to probably answer that, but we can certainly look at it, I would say, to come back.
No, it's just, you and I had a conversation at the very beginning of this whole project why the building wasn't sprinkled, and we were assured at that time that it wasn't required, that we could do exit, move some exits and stuff like that, so. It's just disappointing is that this comes up now, and it's, I'm not a fan of change orders. I mean, we had a price to build the building as designed, and so there should be, I mean, the architect should assume some responsibility for this. I know he's not, there's a clause in the contract, I'm sure, but it's just disappointing that we take a project on like this, and then all of a sudden, we start having change orders in this amount of money, so hopefully this will be the last one.
If it was a lack of design, but he asked, and our building official at the time told them it's not required, they need to provide the two-hour firewall, so.
Michelle, a quick question for you. Item eighteen talks about additional time of project to be sixty days, is that a pending on the end, or?
Correct, yes.
So, we're adding sixty days to do this?
They are requesting the sixty-day extension, which would put us to December twelfth. Right now, they're at October, so full sixty calendar day.
We don't have a choice on this, right? I mean...
No, we really don't, I just, the sixty days are...
Well, you do have a choice. I mean, you have a choice of not sprinkling the building, and then having to go back and put in all the two-hour separation so that you completely, by definition, separate out the assembly section, which would be the chambers, and the business section, which would be that part of the building department, taxes and so forth, engineering. You do have that choice.
Yeah.
But I think, Michelle has said it's not necessarily cost-effective.
Well, the other aspect of that is that once you separate those two, through the two-hour separation by building, design, and code, then you'll have to go back into the chambers and start to augment the square footage, because right now, your square footage is requiring, I think it's three hundred and thirty, yeah, three hundred and thirty-nine people that would be allowed to be in that part of the building. If you choose not to sprinkle, then you're going to have to reduce that square footage in order to cut down the number of people that would be allowed to be in that building, which means some of the alterations would then be with the bathrooms, with the hallways, fixed seating, because you'd lose thirty percent of your fixed seating, or your fixed, thirty percent of your seating would become fixed. So, you would lose the flexibility of that room to, again, a thirty percent degree.
Okay. All right, it's the sixty days that's frustrating me. Seems like a long time to put in a sprinkler system. Vice Mayor?
No, I would make a motion to accept a change, but I would like some comment period after that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, go ahead.
I have this deep thought in the back of my mind that one of the reasons the original preparers of these plans was to make sure the total cost wasn't coming in too high. I'm glad we have funds to support this. I think it would be a mistake not to sprinkler the entire building, especially when you have a situation where we may or we may not exceed the occupancy for which it was designed for, and God forbid, we have a problem there, and we have an insurance company that says, well, maybe you should have sprinkled the whole building, and I don't want to go down that road. I think it serves the citizens' best, being the money is in the contingency, that we do approve this. But I agree with Commissioner Hartman, we've got to really take a hard look at change
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, it doesn't give us very much contingency left, does it? With the balance of how much?
We'd have one hundred and thirty-eight thousand and, what's it change, one hundred and fifteen left.
And this recommendation by the fire marshal is a should, not could, correct? It's something we have to do, there's not much flexibility.
Well, it's been my experience, any time you put a sprinkler system inside of the building, you have a much greater opportunity to save that building in case we have a fire, being that's historic, as well as going to be housing, city property documents and so forth. I think it's just a really good investment to do that. If not, then all we're really doing is using the construction methods in order to subdivide that building up, and we could still have a fire that we may not be able to control and still lose the building.
I agree. Sounds like a should. Yeah, but I would agree.
I would highly recommend it.
It's regrettable, but...
Okay. You finished it?
Yeah.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Being fully sprinkled, would you have an opinion as to whether our insurance rates would be lower?
I can't speak for our insurance carrier, but typically, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. My last comment on this, two things, number one is, I've built a house, and change orders are inevitable. This is the time when, you know, to me, this is the structural time, is when you have to do things that you can't go back and do. So, I think the chances of having expensive change orders, now's the chance. From here on out, it starts becoming aesthetics at some point, and so it becomes pretty discretionary. It's like, hey, we want to upgrade the carpet, or we want to upgrade the lighting, or whatever, becomes a little more discretionary. So, I know when I built my house, we blew our entire contingency budget before the block ever, you know, got finished, but we changed a bunch of stuff, and that was, you know, that's what contingency budgets are for. So, I think you anticipate everything you can, you go under the guidance that we had at the time, which was that building official, that, you know, that leadership at the time, and now we're doing the right thing by the citizens that will sit in that building, the employees that will sit in that building every day, and the building itself even, and the preservation of that, so I can support this. Had a motion and a second.
Is it a wet system?
Yes, sir.
Total?
City Clerk, if you'd call the role, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
But beat the sixty days. No, there you are. All right, that item has been approved. Item E, Barracuda Boulevard and Fifth Street Bridge replacement cost updates, we have Kyle
All right, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Hang on to your slide rule, because I'm about to go over a lot of figures. So, if you have any questions during the presentation, please feel free to interrupt me. Because the costs have gone up with the replacement of Fifth Street and Barracuda Bridge. I'll go over the Fifth Street Bridge will be first. I don't know if you recall, back on November first, 2018, we had a public meeting, and there was a overwhelming push by the residents to extend that bridge. That bridge, which was constructed in sixty-five, was a single span about forty feet long. And of course, there's pros and cons with extending the bridge. Obviously, we extend the retaining wall, we eliminate the retaining wall, and just had to put revetment at the end bends. That was a big... That was a big reduction in construction costs. When you open the waterway, the cross-sectional area, it reduces the tidal-influenced velocity of the water, which lowers the scouring, which lowers the maintenance costs, also increases the volume. And the thought is, it'll reduce some of the sedimentation and increase the aquatic life under the bridge. One of the cons is when we extended the bridge, fortunately, it impacted some additional mangroves, to the extent that we can't do replanning on site, and we're going to have to go to a mitigation bank, which will be somewhere around $350,000. And of course, right now, we're only at about 30 to 40% design, so these figures are apt to change. And I will periodically bring this to your attention. And this evening, this is just for your information, so no action is needed by the commission. The original bridge, go through the design cost, was $577,389. That was revised to about $862,000. We did get a supplemental agreement through FHWA DOT, so we did get 75% of those costs back, which is helpful. The, the original bridge construction cost, $834,000. That was DOT's estimate, and that, of course, has obviously gone up to $1,885,000. But we only get 75% of the program cost, which is about $625,500 of the $834,000. So it didn't increase with the increase of the cost of construction. We did go to the central office. We have put feelers out everywhere we can to get grant money, and I'll talk briefly about that at the end. So essentially, as you can see, the total bridge cost has basically doubled, three, almost $3.1 million to $1.5 million. So the costs have gone extremely, and neither one of these figures includes CEI, the construction, engineering, inspection fees, which are not funded to be supported by the city, are anywhere from $200,000 to $300,000. So it's really, 3.1, if you add $300,000, it's $3.4 million at this point in time for Fifth Street Bridge. Okay, we'll move on to the Barracuda Bridge. This bridge also had some design revisions due to different reasons. During the discovery phase of this project, the geotechnical report found that there was extreme erosion around the seawall, the bulkhead, to the point where they couldn't reuse that system. There was never the intent to replace that bulkhead, that we're going to reuse it, but they simply cannot withstand the lateral forces with the new bridge. So what they'll do is they're going to have to put in a whole new bulkhead system for this bridge, and it will go landward about 17 and 1/2 feet either side of the center line of the bridge, so it adds about 35 feet. So instead of the original single-span 50-foot structure, which again was constructed in '65, same coincidentally as Fifth Street, it'll be an 85-foot single-span structure, and we're going to go with Florida I-beam. So tentatively, we're going to get about a foot more clearance for it. It's an available waterway, Bernano Canal, so that is one benefit. But we did have to extend the bridge, because then we have to extend the supports for the end bends on the bridge. The, next slide, please, Kelly. Now, the costs obviously have gone up with this bridge as well. The, the design, fortunately, design costs did not go up. Design costs, we had a local-funded agency agreement with DOT. So DOT Structures is designing this bridge. Actually, they're going to take it all the way through administrative process and through construction. But our LFA with DOT was $295,000, of which we contributed 25% or $73,750. So, and luckily, that amount hasn't changed. What has changed is the construction costs have gone up tremendously. The construction costs are estimated to be about $2.6 million. And again, DOT has programmed, based on their estimate, $1.2 million. So we get 75% of that back. So we get $900,000 out of $1,200,000, and that does not go up, like pro right of share, like $2.6 million, because there's no funding available with the state. So we still only get $900,000, although the bridge will cost $2.6 million. So essentially, with the, with the reimbursement for the design and for the bridge costs, we get about $1.21 million. And you can see it's $2.6 million. It was $295,000 for design, say, $300,000, so that's $2.9 million. And again, this does not include CEI costs. CEI costs could be $300,000 to $400,000. So you're looking at somewhere between 3.1 and 3.3, say, $3.2 million for each phase of the project, of which we're only going to get the $1.12 million. So there's a deficit there of about $2, $2.2 million. Now, we did submit the call for projects this year through the River to Sea for both the PED bicycle program they have, because both of these bridges, Fifth Street, we added a five-foot concrete sidewalk, which there was none before, and on Barracuda, we've connected the eight-foot multi-use trail to the bridge. So it won't be separated like it is today. It'll be connected, but there'll be a traffic barrier, a concrete barrier between vehicles and pedestrians, which, by the way, fits in with the multi-use trail and the trail that's going to be developed with the MDC later this year as well. So essentially, we'll find out from the River to Sea personnel. They have informed us that our traffic ops has gone through the general fund, SU funding, and there are some special funds and some advanced construction funds that may be available. Good thing about it is we made tier A on our first submittal. So we're hoping that these special funds and these advanced construction funds, which we'll find out later this year, because DOT's fiscal year is July 1st. So when some of these other projects are finishing up and they find out there's excess funds, then they're allocated to these projects. So it's kind of an unknown at this time, but I'm hopeful we'll get some additional funding through that program. And I'd be more than happy to answer your questions now.
I'm not even going to look, but I'm going to bet Vice Mayor has questions. Look at that. Go ahead.
Going back to the first bridge, the, the $350,000 for mitigation?
Yes, sir.
Is that shared with the federal government?
Is that shared with, I didn't catch you...
Will we have to pay 25% of that?
No, sir.
100%?
Yes, sir. 100%, $350,000.
When we purchased, and this is not a question for you, maybe to the attorney, when we purchased Turnbull Creek, we inherited a couple mitigation credits. Is there any chance we could fund our own mitigation credits?
I think I'd look to Brian for some help on that one.
We may be able to. When we ask, those are transferable. They have to, under the Water Management District criteria, they have to match up. We haven't requested that yet, but if we move forward with this, we do have the ability to ask for that.
So we could conceivably save $350,000.
Just has to be in the same basin.
Well, there's certain matching the types and overall impact and...
It's just something that I think that we should, we should look into.
Yes.
It doesn't hurt to ask, one last.
Thank you.
Kyle, question. The mitigation, it's actual mangrove or is it money?
Yes, sir. It's compatible, so it'll be the brackish water with the same type of species, and it's, they are, you know, conservation in perpetuity.
And can we do that within our own city limits? Doesn't have to go somewhere else?
It has to be within the designated basin for the Corps to accept them, because my first goal was to try to replant somewhere, like we've done on the Swoop site, for other impacts. But unfortunately, that wasn't accepted from them, even though it's brackish water, we've used it before, and that may be acceptable for, like, local and for the district, St. John's, but it won't be acceptable for the Corps.
And on, on the Fifth Street Bridge, is there any way to determine the benefit of increased flow of water? I mean, is, is it, to me, it sounds worthwhile. It's an awful lot of money, though. It's a burden on the taxpayer, but it sounds like a smart thing to do for the Indian River flow. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I'll just have to wait for INTERA to do the hydraulic analysis, and then we'll see what the, you know, flushing capacity is and how that equates to an environmental benefit.
Thanks.
So a quick, quick question, maybe for, I don't know who. I've just kind of lost track. On Fifth Street, you're still showing it as two options. We approved, basically going through, I think, the design process for the second option, right? But I mean, when do we cross the Rubicon on picking option A or option B?
This is not the time to select option A or option B. The opposite of 160-foot four-span bridge has been selected. All I wanted to show you was the difference between the initial design and the design selected today. So we are moving forward at this point in time with the longer bridge span.
Is it too late to back up? That's a lot of money. We just, and we're, and we're covering all of it. I mean, so I don't, I mean, you got a plan? How are you paying for that?
That's, that's my next question was, in terms of the funding.
Yo, you're asking us?
No, no. I was going to try to, to bring back, probably on July 28th, to bring back some funding options. We're going to look forward to see if we have any grants available, but then look some other financial options, whether it's a, it's a bond, it's a loan, or you could borrow from the, from the General Reserve. But it's, it's major, major impact on the budget. Kyle, you didn't mention, when is the expected construction on these projects? So just mention the date.
The, both of them have been set back just a little bit because of the design revisions, but it's still programmed for fiscal year '22, so we have to fund the money for this upcoming budget, because fiscal year '22 for DOT is basically a year from now. It's July 1st, 2021, and it goes into 2022.
I mean, with both bridges having, you know, considerable, I don't want to call it cost overruns, but, you know, higher costs than we had originally programmed for. In the one case, it's because we had a, you know, a failure of a system that we thought we could reuse and were not able to reuse. And in the other case, there was a conscious decision to, I would call it an enhancement of that project. And, you know, I feel like if I'd known about the one, which, I'm not faulting you all, you find it when you find it, but if I'd known about the one, I don't know if I'd have been so gung-ho on the enhancement. And now I'm just wondering, can we pay for both? So. You don't have to have an answer tonight. I'm just telling you what's on my mind, and I guess my question for you at some point is going to be, you know, if we can't, or if we're having to stretch too deep to do that with everything else you've got going on, how, when is, again, have we crossed the Rubicon going back to, to the original design on the, on the Fifth Street? Or trying to, can we punt one of them? Can we offset? And, you know, are they both about to fall down, or can we try to get some timing benefits here? Or, I don't know, just...
I just have a question for Kyle. Have you, the consultants, maybe you want to just ask him tomorrow, if we go back to the original design on Fifth Street? Because I know they started on the design, but then we changed the design to this one. So there is some design cost involved, so I just want to find out, what is the impact by reversing back to the original design?
And so far, this is just me speaking, so I'm just one commissioner, but I'm just telling you what's in my head.
I just want to get an idea.
Yes, so this way you have it.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I generally agree with your points, Mayor. You know, like any project, we go ahead and we pick what we think is the best one, which was the second option for the Fifth Street. And the cost is so extreme that that's really not what we intended to, at least let me speak for myself. Are we at the point of no return, or can we go back to the first option and save a lot of money on Fifth Street?
We can go with either option. We've already paid for the design for either option.
Okay, so we're not at a point where we can't go back to option one on Fifth Street to cut the cost?
We are not at that point, but we have incurred some of the additional design costs associated with it. So if you remember the 577 to the 861, those have been incurred.
Yes, we got some sunk cost on option two.
Right.
So I think what we, what I would like to see in the future is that cost difference. In other words, how much do we have invested? What's, we know what the total cost is going to be, but how much money are we actually saving by going back to the first option, even though we've put some cost into the second option? What is the net effect there and how much is that? I, I'd certainly like to know that when we address this issue again. And I agree, you know, these, these, these are big-ticket items, and they're very significant to our budget. So I have a concern with coming into the budgets. I should speak more to the commission. I'm looking at you, Kyle. So, you know, we're going into our budgets. We have commissioners that want to cut the budget or, you know, reduce taxes. At the same time, we're, again, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but we're in a great economy. We're making more money now than we're going to make a lot more money now than to deal with the issues when we have a declining economy of property values. So we have a lot of issues that we, things we can't pay for, both these bridges, and we got docks, and we got all kinds of other things that people want, amenities people want. It gets back into the discussion of what is the level of service and quality of life that our residents have? What's their expectation? So if we can't provide these when the economy's fantastic, we're, you know, what are we going to do when the economy's not good and we're having to cut everything? So that's, this is going to segue into the budget discussions we're going to have over the next few months.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Hartman, I'll saw you next.
Per DOT, though, both bridges are failing, right?
They are structurally deficient.
Can we put construction back a year? Just because they say it's going to be in next year's budget doesn't necessarily mean they're going to actually start it, right?
Yes, we are supposed to start these projects the latter part of next, next year, 2021.
Okay.
If we don't, we lose the funds associated with the construction.
Okay.
Shouldn't we figure if we put it off even longer, the cost will go up for construction? Just a consideration. I'm not anxious to spend another million dollars.
Yeah, no, that's certainly a risk, and losing the, you know, any kind of matching funding is a, is a risk as well. So I'm not saying we do all that. I just, I just want to be intentional about it, and, and I feel like we, you know, with both going up so much, is, you know, just looking for options here. Or if nothing else, just want to go into this budget, as Commissioner McGurk said, kind of eyes wide open that we're making a significant investment in this infrastructure, and, you know, it's got to come from somewhere.
Kyle, can we figure the cost-benefit analysis for the hydrodynamic benefit to the river before we make that decision?
I can inquire with a consultant if they can do that. I'll let you know. What benefit are you looking for? What cost benefit are you looking for?
Improvement of flow, which, I'd only a guess, I'm no expert, but you would think it might improve the flow in and out of the Indian River.
Okay.
I mean, my, my guess is it's going to be hard to, I mean, they can quantify the flow, and I think we have to try to make some opinions to the, the cost-benefit side. I don't know if some experts can be able to tell us that. If they can, great, but, yeah. Vice Mayor, I know you had a comment. Go ahead.
You had mentioned earlier that there is going to be an environmental assessment associated with it.
Hard time understand what you're saying.
Oh, environmental assessment. You mentioned that's part of the studies that's coming forth.
That has already primarily, mostly been accomplished at this point in time.
Has that environmental study given any indication, not just in the amount of flow, if there would be any real benefit of making the structure longer? So I know originally, the, the citizens were very concerned about the buildup of sediment on the westbound side of the island, Yacht Club Island.
Right.
And, and they seem to feel that if the bridge was wider, it would make that sediment go away. Has that subject been addressed by our environmental consultant?
That is not, no, that's not part of their task. What they have permitted through U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and you look at the essential fish habitat, and you look at the district's criteria, they look at the impact of the actual construction. So there are, for instance, small sawtooth fish, sea turtles, that type of thing. So they'll, they'll look at the impact of the proposed construction on the aquatic life.
Okay, so they're not necessarily doing a hydraulic analysis?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Kyle, thank you for bringing all this good news to us tonight.
Sure.
On the Telly, it, Mayor, we're bringing back the Central Beach FEMA grants project. That's a significant impact on the budget as well. So, I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna work with Kyle to see if we can bring back some, some figures for you on both, whether we go back to the original design or stick with this design, and then see if we could maybe provide at that time, if we can, some options if they're available.
And I would just encourage you, Kyle, and Kyle, when you put that together, don't confuse the issue too much with sunk cost, because they are what they are. So, to me, the difference is from where we sit today, how much additional money are we gonna spend on option A versus option B? How much we spent getting to this point is what it is. And it shouldn't matter in making a determination of where we go from this point forward. That's just, I mean, I'm not saying hide them, put them out there, but just try not to confuse the issue too much with sunk cost.
And that's what we'll try to provide, that just from this point on, if we change back, you know, what is the impact?
Here's the, here's the options and the impact on the budget. Item F, and again, for clarity, include them. Put them out there somewhere. I'm not trying to hide them by any stretch. Item F, authorization to issue a purchase order for a citywide Parks Master Plan. Brian?
Kelly, if you could please pull up the last page in item F. That's the, kind of the cost breakdown. So, Parks Master Plan, this is an item the commission's identified on multiple occasions. It's also in our comprehensive plan as an action item to prepare a Parks Master Plan. To complete this task, we consulted with three of our continuing services planning consultants. We interviewed them. We selected VHB for this task based on their similar experience with Parks Master Plans. And what they have proposed is a, I would call it a robust, very thorough Parks Master Plan. It's $138,575. We prepared this with really everything that we would want to have. It's prepared somewhat in a la carte fashion. So, there's some items in there. If the commission did not want to move forward on, they could be extracted or reduced to lower that cost. It's funded by Parks Impact Fees. Our current fund balance unencumbered is about $230,000. Just as a reminder, we are doing a study of our Parks Impact Fee. It's very low. We expect that to go up. So, this would be replenished at some point and hopefully fund additional projects. The proposal has a lot of detail about the tasks that are performed. It does include a specific line item to look at the AOB site. If the commission wanted to explore that site in more detail, that could be extracted if we didn't want to include that in the study. One question came up about the sports complex. Really, every site, including the sports complex, would undergo a needs evaluation, an inventory, and then a planning exercise to determine the improvements at each park, including the sports complex. So, pardon? And the AOB site was a specific line item. The other parks are part of that overall needs assessment. Schedule is included. The draft would be in front of the commission in November of 2020. That's a very accelerated schedule. So, staff recommends we do move forward with the project as proposed. Here to take any questions or possible adjustments.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Hartman?
Are they gonna look at the pocket parks as designated by PUDs that are currently out there that call for green spaces or a pocket park? I've been in conversation with some, with the HOA at Venetian Bay, and they have some parcels of land that are too small to build on, but they may be willing to do some kind of a, a partnership if it's, if it's gonna include some park space or some amenities. So, would they include that in their?
Yes, yeah, we can include those. That's not the level of detail here, but if that's a point of emphasis, that can be included in the scope.
And what we could do too is, the AOB site, I don't think it needs to be included here. So, you could take the $17,940. If the pocket parks is not included in this one, you know, we could work out some, some deal from that one.
Okay.
Comment?
Quick question. Brian, we, we've had some differing opinions on the quantity of parks for our city and our population. Would that assessment include how much park space you might need for a population of this size and growing?
Yes, it'll look at all the different types of parks, from basketball, pickleball, tennis, playgrounds, look at our level of service, what we have, where we're deficient, not just geographically, but also demographically, looking at, you know, parks serve people of different ages. This would look at all of those issues.
Have you seen assessments like this? I've, I've never heard of an outside...
In fact, we reviewed some existing studies that other cities had done to model for this.
They use these consultants. Thank you.
So, I've been one that's called for this. I support it. I just am concerned that we keep, I hope we're not writing checks so we can't cash. So, I, I would say maybe, I'd, I'd love to support it after we, I guess this would come out of this year's budget? And is it coming out of Park Impact Fees? Or is this from a funding source that you're confident in? Or, okay. Okay. Vice Mayor?
The comprehensive plan is something we should really have. I do feel that this proposal is too expensive, and I would like to see the scope of it cut back somewhat. Definitely not the AOB site. We can beat that to death ourselves. The, at $17,000. We put a lot in our resiliency plans. We have a lot of data there. We have a lot of opinions as to what the people need. I would like to see, I'd like to see you go back and try to consolidate some of our existing data and get a lower price. As the mayor pointed out and has been stated, we certainly have the funds in our impact fees to pay for this. But, what we're doing is we're taking away dollars that we could use for physical improvements to our parks. We have a good history over the last couple of years of upgrading our parks, and we may be bringing that to the end by paying a consultant a lot of money. So, I would like to see them come back with a reduced cost.
The community workshops, and we got three of those, we could probably scale that back.
Yeah, just looking at, there's a lot of public input, and, and we told our consultant that's important to us, and they responded. There's probably an opportunity to reduce there between the stakeholder interviews, the community survey, and the community workshops.
It is important. My, you know, I think what we'll, what we see, though, is you hold three workshops, you got the same, the same crowd at all three. That's the same for the community input. Like, I think we can get that population really easily. So, I think it'd be an opportunity to scale back without sacrificing community input. Joe, comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question, I, I have some concern with this. We have a lot of studies done. The AOB site ad nauseam. I mean, we have back a whole North Causeway Master Plan starts with, and that's just in my lifetime here. And we've had a number of workshops about the AOB site. I don't mind doing this if it means that we accomplish tangible progress. I don't want to spend a hu, over $100,000 just to have another expert tell us what they think we should do to then have all the residents come out and not want to do it, or a group of residents and not want to do it. So, my question to staff and my fellow commissioners is, how is this one different? What's the goal when we spend this money? I don't think it should be so comprehensive. I think it should be more narrow so we can then deal with it in a tangible way. I don't want a Parks Master Plan. How many of those do we have?
Just, you have to go back and, and see how we got to this point. If you recall, when we started doing the mini-budget workshops in the beginning of the year, and we had the leisure services and the maintenance operation, and they start talking about some of the maintenance of the piers and parks, and that's when Commissioner Hartman, he suggested that we probably need to have a mass, a Park Master Plan in order to make the decisions on these, I guess, parks or the piers or whatever that we needed to do at the time. So, that's how we got to this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I realize that, and I agree with that, and I agree with what Commissioner Hartman was saying. But, kind of like the homeless workshop we just had, in my mind, there was a narrow focus we wanted to do. We did a workshop, and it encompassed, how do we fix homelessness? So, Commissioner Hartman, I understand what he wants to do and why he wants to do it. I just want to make sure that this doesn't just become another big comprehensive plan that we sit around and say, okay, now we have some opinions, and it gets put on the shelf, it gets dusty. I want, I get, what I'm saying is I want to try to make it more narrow so we can get some tangible progress on it. I don't want this thing being so comprehensive that we've got a lot of theoretical ideas of what could be done, and there's no money to even attempt a quarter of it.
Brian, as I look at this, to build on what Commissioner McGurk said, honestly, .5 on packet page 381, actually, top of page 381, deliverables, like, that's what I'm driving to get out of. They could almost stop there. So, it's this needs assessment to say, what's our level of service analysis, recommending benchmarks, a locational deficiency analysis, something I think Commissioner Hartman's been, been talking about. You know, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Girk. If we could scale this, I know we said comprehensive. We said the words a lot, I think, from here. So, I think staff took what we said and gave us what we said. Now that we see it and the dollars with it, I think we're saying, if we could scale this back a little bit, I think it would still give me at least the data points. The question just keeps coming up for me is, do we have too many parks? Do we not have enough parks? Do we have the right kind of parks? Would we, you know, those are the kind of questions that I'd like to get answered. And I don't necessarily mean it from the community, because they have no problem calling me and telling me. I don't need, I don't need a consultant to hold a workshop to, you know, I can get the input of the community. So, I think we could scale it back in that way probably pretty efficiently. Comment?
I gotta make the comment. I wish I had a nickel for every study we paid for that probably sits collecting dust on the shelf. And maybe all cities do that, but it's such a waste of money sometimes, I think. Scaling it back is almost brilliant. I would, I would look for ways to cut. Because it, it does seem like, I think the vice mayor said, we could use these monies to make these improvements. So, I...
Okay, so we need to give staff some, sorry, were you finishing?
That's okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's okay.
So, yes.
And we'll talk about it later, but the meeting that I was in on Friday, you're gonna have to involve the community more in some of these decisions, because where we think this makes a nice park, some communities don't think that makes a nice park. So, there's gonna have to be some community involvement somewhere in the line.
And to be clear, I'm not saying there shouldn't be community involvement.
Right.
I'm saying I don't need a consultant to host a workshop to get community involvement. I can...
Right.
We can do that.
You know, initially, Mayor, when, when we started talking about this topic just recently, I was gonna actually try to postpone this until next year's budget, not this year. But it's, yeah. I'm just thinking at this point, it's, I think we have done, we've done not a master plan, but we did a park inventory with the maintenance operation two years ago. I think we have an information to last until next year's budget. And we could come back with a, with a proposal that might fit your vision more than, more than this one.
All right.
We're kicking the can down the road. You're gonna have to have the plan before you go forward with anything else. So, this will hold up any other future plans or future parks or future designations. Talking about fishing piers or anything else, I will not support until we have a master plan that says, we have X, a city our size should have X, and we meet or we exceed. We may even want to cut a few parks out or downsize them because we have too many. We have a lot of parking lots that we call parks. Are they truly parks? You also, I mean, the construction out west are the ones who's paying into the impact fees. They're paying your impact fees. It hasn't slowed down. We're gonna talk another subdivision with 60 homes in it that will pay impact fees. So, whether you do it now or kick it down the road, it's still gonna have to get done at some point in time. Next year's budget is gonna be worse than this year's budget, and the following year after that will be even worse, I'll bet. You know, so, it's gonna keep getting worse. So, if we don't do something sooner than later, I don't see how we can justify whatever we decide to do in the future. So...
Okay. So, gentlemen, just a quick time check. It's 8:30. We've still got COVID, and we've got a couple of second readings and public hearings. It could take some time. So, I'd like to just put this to bed in some way, form or fashion. So, I personally can't support anything on this. I'd say we either do it, or maybe we give staff a not-to-exceed-in-this motion, or, you know, not to exceed $100,000 or something like that, just so we can get it done, or we ask staff to bring it back to us at some future meeting. So, do I have a motion on this item? Is that a motion or a comment?
Neither at this point, I guess.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I agree with Commissioner Hartman in principle, that this is not the study we need, but we need to have the study. That's it.
Okay.
No motion. I think the staff understands all of our concerns, and they can come back to us.
Okay. So, we'll just let staff bring it back to us at a future, at a future meeting? I think I heard a lot of us want it sooner than later. So, I guess, I guess the direction I'm hearing from the commission is go back, bring us back something that scoped back, scaled, scaled back a little bit. But in, but, but now not, not kicking it as it was suggested, so... All right. Item G, COVID discussion. So, I asked staff to add this here. It had gotten relegated into city manager report. If I could start COVID all over, I would do it this way the entire time, because of that ended up at 11 o'clock at night, trying to rush through a bunch of stuff. So, but we are where we are. So, any, any outstanding items, I think most of our restrictions and everything have been lifted. I do want to address one thing before Kyle starts, and that is, I've received numerous emails from citizens asking me, you know, hey, the mayor of such and such has required the wearing of mask, which they always say that as if the mayor did it unilaterally. I think in most cases, it was a council decision, but the mayor's the headline, right? So, the mayor of such and such has required masks. Why don't, why don't you require that here? My canned response to that and my continued stance is, I don't believe government entities have that, have that power to mandate what people wear on a, in a face covering type setting. Some of the places that have done that, Orlando most notably, has been, they're now in litigation on that. They, they're within minutes of it happening, they've been sued. I do think with the, the rise in cases that we're seeing, I do think we could, you know, maybe ramp back up our, our social awareness of that and our, you know, public, you know, public awareness campaigns around that. If Phil can, can help to push that word out to businesses and we can support that message. And I want to, again, add clarity. I, I wear my mask almost any time I'm in public. I don't when I'm up here, because I'm talking the entire time. So, but otherwise, I, I do wear my mask. I know many of you all do as well. I know they've become almost political at this point, but let's use common sense. So, with that, Kyle, is there anything else on COVID that we need to go over, and then we'll open it up for discussion?
I just want to point out one thing. On Wednesday, we had a conference call with the managers regarding COVID. At the time, we had the Health Department give us a brief, what about 22 minutes. There wasn't any concern at the time. Then on Friday, they had a, a press conference, and it seems like the concern has changed. And I asked the Health Department yesterday, what was the difference between Wednesday and Friday? The average cases between Wednesday and Friday, it went from 11 to 62. So, that's why the concern was there. So, right now, we're just planning, if it does increase, and I'm talking about city operation, that we will go back to Phase One. Our Phase One, where we split the troops, and we had people work from home and people at the office. So, that plan is in place. If we need to do it, we will do it. The, the Health Department, they asked me if we could maybe provide masks for the public. They will provide the mask, but they need somebody to distribute them. They will get back... They will get back with me probably tomorrow. I suggested either Fire Station 50, or the Babe James Center, that we could do that. The test that they did back in, last, on the sixteenth, they have exceeded far the numbers that they expected in the beginning. We had over eleven hundred tests in New Smyrna, which I don't think any other city has that many tests available. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, any questions on this?
Very quick, Mayor, do we actually have yet back the percentages of those tested positive?
We don't have that, Commissioner, but I asked her, and she mentioned that there is two tests came back, and they were, in terms of the age, less than twenty-four years old. But they don't have the, the final results yet.
All right, but we'll, you'll get those out to us as soon as they become available. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on COVID-related items? And again, this isn't really to, you know, we each have our concerns and, you know, fears and whatever, but is any, any actions that need to be taken on this? Go ahead, Vice Mayor, saw your hand up. One of you looks at me and nods, and one of you raised your hand, so I'm always trying to...
I'll defer to the Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I think our staff has really done a good job in managing this whole problem. I know that some initiatives are, are taken, such as out at the golf course. The manager out there has decided that it's better to close the clubhouse because of the close proximity of the people in it. And they do now require them to stay outside and do their business through the window. So I, I have a lot of faith in our staff and the way they're doing it.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks?
I would request of staff to ask the county for another round of tests for this area. I don't think they tested long enough. I feel like we were neglected and set aside for too many weeks. So if we could bring them back with another, however many it takes. I know my neighbors got tests, everybody, you know, a lot of people were fearful enough. I, I'm very dismayed, and, and it is upsetting that masks or no masks has become political. And I've looked at the science ad infinitum, and really boiled it down to that R factor. If you guys looked at that R factor, that reproduction rate, we're still high, we're still up. We're not go, we're not going down. We've kinda flattened, but our reproduction rate is like one point three something. So for every hundred people, a hundred and thirty some odd people will get it. They will infect more people than have it. So if we could get it down below an R rate of one, we would be very happy. I was, I was dismayed to say no to the Canal Street merchants to, to have outdoor dining. It was because of that factor. And sure enough, look at the rates in Central Florida. They, they're skyrocketing now with, with the young folks who didn't wear a mask. That's all I would ask. So I don't know if you guys would agree to, you know, if we ask people to do something, sometimes they say yes, sometimes they say screw you. So why don't we ask, make a resolution to, to encourage people to wear masks, especially in government buildings? Not require them to, but encourage them to. Could I get a second for a resolution to encourage people to wear masks? It's masks and social distancing and washing your hands.
I mean, if we do it via resolution, we'd have to have resolution drafted at our next meeting, which at the earliest would be the thirtieth by some work of genius, but wouldn't be able to publish it by then. So we're, we're, we're talking August or September, by the time we got two readings of an ordinance through. I, I think what I asked for was, cuz I, I agree with you. I think, you know, ramping back up the, the, the social media awareness, the, the public campaigns that we can do of, of, you know, asking, not requiring, kinda that positive peer pressure on, you know, the, the, you know, potential positive side effects. I mean, the one comment I've heard that, you know, it just resonates with me is, look, if it, you know, if you're undecided about the science, if it, if it makes someone else feel better, if it works, great. You may have helped someone. If it doesn't, at most, you've worn a, you know, you've worn a piece of cotton on your face for a little while, so it's not the end of the world. So, you know, I, I think for the, for where we're at, that's probably the best thing. And obviously, if we see cases continue to decline locally, I think we take emergency measures, even over the course of July. I think we start rallying back to emergency met, you know, call an emergency meeting, and, and, you know, go back to, to whatever we need to do. I also wanted to put something else to bed. I got an email, I don't know if all y'all were copy it, I can't remember, I get so many. But I, I had somebody that talked about the, the, you know, our ICU beds are filling up in our hospital. It's not true, not a single COVID ICU case has been admitted to our hospital. So just put that one out there.
We're lucky, yeah, right.
No, we, yeah, we've, we've been very fortunate. And they have, I wanna speak for, for them, but my conversations with them are, you know, they, they took down that extra capacity that they had added in the parking lot with those tents. They have no concerns with capacity at this point. Obviously, they're concerned, like all of us, with the rising numbers. But one, one good thing, if you could find any kind of a silver lining, is those rising numbers have been in a demographic that, they don't land in the hospital with this disease. Now, yes, I get how transmission works, they could impact somebody that does. But so far, we're not seeing that. We're seeing community pass between a younger demographic, and they don't land in the ICU. They probably don't even land in the hospital. And so that's, that's what, that's what our medical folks that I'm talking to in our community are, are seeing. So I think we should ramp up our, our social media awareness and go from there.
Quick note, just talking about, we asked the Health Department about the number of hospital bids in Volusia County. It's about five hundred and fifty-nine. And then they gave us statistics, like, back in April first, of how many people were hospitalized, and then in May first, and, I mean, in, in June first. And we weren't even close, I think they had like sixteen in, in one month, nineteen in another month. So I think we have far more hospital bids than what, how many were hospitalized.
We're not pushing capacity. I wanna go back to one other thing Commissioner Sacks brought up on the testing. Were we turning people away? I know we had record numbers, but did, do we feel that there were people that were trying to get tested that didn't make it through? Do you know? Cuz if so, I would certainly support bringing it back, but if they were just standing around...
I'm not sure how many, Mayor, but I know when they, when they told us, when I asked for the testing site, and they said it's as long as it lasts. And so we have eleven hundred tests, and I think, I don't think any other city has the, the same amount of tests that we had. So that's how many tests they had, and it lasted the three days, and that they were gone. I will ask them again if we could have...
Oh, so the three days was determined by when they ran out of the allotment of tests, the eleven hundred?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, the first, the first day they were expecting two hundred, we had like over, I think, over three hundred and fifty.
It probably is worth asking, and I know, you know, Khalid, thank you for fighting to get that here the first time, but it probably is worth asking if we can get in the queue again. I don't know how that process works. I know every other city is trying to lobby to get testing in their backyard, so. But if we can try to get in that queue, there's no, no harm in, in doing that, so. Any other COVID-related comments, questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Hartman?
So were those New Smyrna Beach residents only? Or did that include Oak Hills, Edgewater?
I wasn't at the site, but I know the fire chief is here, so...
Think he stepped out.
He's gone. Okay.
I'm not really sure, Commissioner, but I'll find out for you.
That's a good point, it probably was, I doubt they were turning people away, so. Anything else?
So if we could just ramp up the social media message, maybe that's appropriate, I hope so. And Khalid, thanks to you and staff for doing a fine job. We anguished and deliberated, and you guys stepped up above, so. Thank you.
The PIO, they had their conference call, and, and I know that they are going to speed and express the, wearing the mask and just being careful, CDC guidelines and social distancing. So they're having a, a big campaign to do that on social media.
All right, next item up, eight A. So there's no action taken, we gave staff some direction on that, no action on, on item G. Item eight A is a quasi-judicial public hearing to consider the approval of the final plat for Copper Creek, a seventy-three, seventy-three single-family lot subdivision located near the northeast corner of Sugar Mill Drive and Pioneer. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing to consider this approval. Now is the time to disclose any ex parte communications. I remind the commission of the email that Carrie sent a couple meetings back on that. So we'll come down the road, any ex parte communications to disclose, Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Sacks? Commissioner McGurk?
No.
None from Commissioner Hartman, I have none as well. All right, well, first here from the city, Chief Planner Jeff Gove, if you would, please be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would state your full legal name, your educational and professional background.
Jeffrey Gove, I have a bachelor's from Trinity College in Hartford, Connecticut. Graduate studies at University of Georgia School of Environmental Design. I've been a practicing planner in the state of Florida for over thirty years, public and private, and have been a member of American Institute of Certified Planners for the last twenty-five years.
Thank you. Does any member of the audience with the commission wish to question Mr. Gove on his qualifications? If not, are there any objections to qualifying him as an, as a, an expert witness in the area of land development? There being no objections, he's determined to be an expert in the area of land development and qualified to give opinion testimony. Mr. Gove, are you familiar with the final plat and development plans for Copper Creek?
Yes, I am.
Please state whether it's consistent with the comp plan, and share your recommendations for this final plat and development plan.
It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Should be noted, the comprehensive plan, when this was annexed in two thousand eighteen, has a specific limitation that the applicants imposed upon themselves to maximum of two units per acre below the five units per acre that would be typically allowed for that designation. So we find it consistent. It's seventy-three single-family lots on forty-eight acres. And the density actually does comply, even though it came in in two thousand eighteen before the new density regulations, it still does comply, and is less than what would have been imposed if those wetlands were taken out of the density equation.
Thank you for that clarification. Any member of the city commission or the applicant wish to question Mr. Gove on his testimony? All right, we'll now hear from the applicant, if they would choose to present, or any witnesses they would choose to present. Is this one yours too, Glenn, or you just, you just coming up out of habit, or what? I didn't know you were representing this.
Just looking for to stand, everybody.
All right.
No, for the record, my name is Glenn Storch, and I represent the applicant in this case. And we did the, the comp plan amendment, where we reduced the density from five to two units per acre. And as you can tell, this particular plat, because of working together with staff, and working together to save trees and create this private road subdivision, actually comes out at one point six units per acre. But it, the, the key is gonna be the amount of trees that have been saved in the site. This is really gonna be something special.
Okay.
Does any questions, I also have the engineer here to answer any questions. Obviously, the key is, at this point, do we meet all the provisions of the Land Development Code? We, we do. We have a staff recommendation of approval, and we have a planning board recommendation of approval.
Okay. Does any member of the city commission wish to question the witness? Commissioner Hartman?
Has there been any discussion with the school board about possible school, bus stops and that sort of thing? I mean, have you...
I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Okay.
But it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, because they're, I mean, this is close to Isles of Sugar Mill, so they're having issues. I think it would probably, maybe that conversation needs to be...
I've gotta talk to the school board next week anyway, I'll be glad to bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Glenn, you're on City Sewer, right?
Yes, yeah. There'll be, there'll be City Sewer, that will be run to that place. I think there's a, there's gonna be a requirement for a new lift station, I suspect, but if, if I remember correctly. But yes, it'll have to be City Sewer and Water.
Mayor Comment? Glenn, I noticed a lot of these properties roughly seventy-five by one-twenty.
Seventy-five by what?
One-twenty-ish.
Yeah.
I'd like to keep that. I'm actually, I pulled this up, I looked at it, and, on the agenda, and I was pleased to see that we're not looking at fifty-foot frontage lots, and so on and so forth. I, I like that, and I hope I see more of these, and I would love to get to a hundred by one-twenty. I understand the, the problems with that.
Yeah.
But this is a lot better than I've seen the last couple of years, with a bunch of little homes just packed in to each other, creating issues with water, stormwater, one property to another.
Part of the reason for that is because this is more, more or less, I mean, seventy-five by a hundred and twenty now is an estate lot. So you're looking at...
An estate lot.
Yeah, right.
That's a marketing. The marketer's got a hold of that one.
The marketer's changed. But this is, this is, this is gonna be such a beautiful place, with the, the creek in the middle of it and everything else. There's a reason why they have made this so that it's special. And so the people in here will, obviously, with a, if it's a private road, they're gonna be, they're gonna be required to pay for the maintenance of that.
My, my point is, when this comes down the pipe further, I don't wanna see a drastic change, I don't wanna see a bunch of fifty-foot lot.
Under, I, I got, I got the message loud and clear, Jason.
Okay.
Glenn, please, one more question. You described a creek, will storm waters be flowing into that creek?
Harry? I, I don't know, do you know? Probably not. I would guess that there'll be separate stormwater, a separate stormwater system created. And I doubt that it'll be going into the creek. Harry, that's the question.
This is an engineer or an attorney?
Yeah.
Hang on.
Harry Newkirk, Newkirk Engineering.
Hang on, he's got, she's got a swearing in over here.
Do you swear affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Harry Newkirk, Newkirk Engineering, twelve-thirty North US Highway One, Ormond Beach. The stormwater system, we have to pre-treat all stormwater in wet detention ponds, and those ponds will then discharge into the creek.
As they, as they naturally do now.
That is correct. We discharge less rate in volume, so we retain more water on-site, and basically displace less than a hundred years storm event. So we're doing a stormwater net improvement to the area.
Just to clarify for the audience, there'll be less stormwater going into the creek than there is right now.
Correct.
This might be a question for staff, will, will those overflow volumes have to be class-two stormwater? Do you know? A better class of stormwater.
Staff is pointing at you.
Possibly with baffle boxes.
Harry, could you address the specific treatment criteria that was applied by the Water Management District?
The, that's a good question. The, the site in pre-development, which is before you do construction, was a farm. And the farm has a lot of nitrogen and phosphorus on it. So when you convert that to a residential subdivision, you actually are doing improvement to the environment with respect to discharging off-site. And we do do an improvement with nutrients discharging off this property that would then get into the river system, so. And that's pretty much being required on almost all projects now. That's to get extra stormwater.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
So I think that was a note of class-two, though, just for absolute clarity.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
That was a note of class-two. I think the argument is, it's an improvement over a high nitrogen load farm, but a note of class-two runoff is...
Right, reduce nitrogen. Class-two waters have a very definite definition, an area, this is not in the class-two waters area.
Okay. I just, just wanna make sure we got a, a yes or no answer on that. Okay.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
No questions, just a comment.
Go ahead. All right, let's hear from the, let's hear from the public, this is a public hearing, so let's hear from the public, and then we'll get to Commissioner's comments. Any members of the public wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Closing remarks from the city or the applicant? Any closing remarks? Okay. Comments, commission? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Well, as most of you have heard, I think we should apply a standard to how much, related to how much of developable land should be set aside in any particular development. If those standards had been put in place as I, as I envisioned them, I, I find that the plan that's been submitted would meet all those requirements. It's, it's a, a really good design, and I'd like to see when some open space is set aside, so. It's good.
Other comments by the commission? I just pulled up the area, I don't, I don't see the creek, but it's just me.
There's, there's a road called Canyon Way or something.
Canyon Way.
The marketer's really got a hold of this.
States on a canyon.
State side lots on Canyon Road in Florida. State side lots on Canyon Road in Florida.
My understanding there really is a creek there. Maybe it's just not there all the time.
All right, I just, I don't see it or where it goes, but, all right. Any other comments by the commission on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
This final plat and development plan has been approved. Item B, quasi-judicial public hearing for the approval of the Coastal Woods Commercial East replat located at the northeast corner of State Road Forty-four and Sugar Mill Drive. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing as well, so same thing on ex parte communications for this particular item. Vice Mayor.
None.
Commissioner Sacks says none. Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Drive-by.
Drive-by. I think I have the same. I don't believe I've talked, if I have, it's been so long, I couldn't tell you what it was about, but I don't think I've talked to anybody about this, so. I have none as well. Mr. Gove, you're still under oath. Are you familiar with this replat? And if you would, state whether it's consistent with the cop plan and share your recommendation.
Yes, I'm familiar with the plan. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we do recommend approval.
Okay. Anything to add on?
What this does is, the Coastal Woods Commercial subdivision plat that was previously plotted, this is dealing strictly with a fifteen-acre piece that's east of Sugar Mill Drive. Most of its dimensional area, the length is along State Road Forty-four, and it extends from Sugar Mill Drive east to Oak Lane. Both of those roads are county roads. State Road Forty-four is DOT, so the accesses are controlled by other entities besides the city. The commercial subdivision shows what was originally plotted and proposed for single entrance on Oak Lane, single entrance on Sugar Mill Drive, and one entrance to an interior drive from State Road Forty-four, again permitted by DOT. And the sole aspect that we're considering tonight is, that entire fifteen-acre piece, Fronting Forty-four was one, planted as one parcel. This subdivides it into four lots to be sold individually for commercial development, along with designating the retention area and the private roadways. One of the lots, Lot Two, in the interior, is already contemplated and actually approved with a site plan for the seven-eleven on a one-and-a-half acre site on the interior driveway. So, the other three lots will then be up for sale and subject to site plan approval whenever somebody is interested in purchasing them and developing them.
Okay.
That's Lot Two that is slated for the seven-eleven?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any questions of Mr. Gove on his testimony? Any questions from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you recall the transportation impact analysis?
I don't recall the details of it. It has been a lengthy process and was actually completed this year. A lot of coordination between the developers, Geosam, because it can, not just, the only consideration was not just this fifteen-acre commercial piece that we're discussing tonight, but actually the entire Coastal Woods Commercial subdivision, including the much larger part on the west side of Sugar Mill Drive between there and ninety-five, all the way up to Pioneer Trail, all the residential. And that was an extensive traffic study, again, reviewed by our consultants, by the county, by DOT, and there's improvements to Sugar Mill Drive that the county ultimately agreed would be needed and are specified basically for road widening of Sugar Mill Drive.
Sheriff, this is a hard question. There was one dissenting vote from the board, from the board. Do you, do you recall what those concerns were?
The concern was, pretty much, that it seemed to me, not really enthusiasm about the type of commercial development that may have been proposed. Again, another seven-eleven or convenience store. They were looking for more medical offices, now that we all know that Advent has purchased the property on the west side, and that will come, but we anticipate that being on the west parcel, which is much bigger and kind of satellite to the hospital there.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff on this item? All right, if not, we'll now hear from the applicant and any witnesses they would choose to present. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Amber Coleman, I'm corporate counsel for the applicant. I think Mr. Gove has pretty much said it all. It's pretty straightforward. Fifteen-acre parcel that we're splitting into four lots. There's four other tracks, one stormwater, two parcels for, or two tracks for private roadway, and the ride-away track that goes along Oak Lane to the, on the east side. We have one lot that's kind of already spoken for, that's Lot Two, which, for seven-eleven, and they have approved site plan, so I guess this is the, the last thing that we need to move forward with that project.
Okay.
If I have any questions, I can take.
Any questions of the applicant from the commission? All right, stand by. It is a public hearing. We'll open it to any members of the public that wish to testify on this item. Any members of the public, now's your chance. Seeing none. You're going to sit there all night in that hard chair and not, dedication right there, dedication. All right. Any member, nope, no witnesses. Okay, we'll now hear any closing remarks from the city and the applicant. Jeff, any closing remarks?
No.
Any closing remarks? Okay.
Mayor moved to approve.
Moved to approve.
Second for discussion.
Have a second? Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
I just want to say that for anybody who drives past the site, they will remember for a year or a little longer, it was basically a big, flat area of sand, but since we have passed our construction mitigation ordinance, if you go past there now, it almost looks like a lawn. It's quite an improvement, it'll cut down on dust-borne erosion and water erosion as well. So, has nothing to do with this approval, but I just want to point that out. It's good to see good construction practices.
And per our new standards, that couldn't happen again, right?
The, yeah, we, we would not have brought that item here tonight if the site were not restored to the condition it is. So, that was, you know, we've identified a number of items with Geosam, and they've brought things into compliance. One was that parent track traffic study for the overall coastal woods, so, so yes, that's, the new standards are taking effect, and you're starting to see that.
Okay, thank you. So, city attorney, real, real quick, for my benefit, for the public's benefit, remind us, these are quasi-judicial proceedings, so we're voting based on the evidence given, not necessarily the merits of, hey, we're jumping because we really want a seven-eleven on that lot.
Correct. You have criteria in front of you in your staff report with the professional staff opinion that it meets the criteria, so unless you find a deficiency in the evidence that's been presented before you, you, you'd be compelled to vote yes if it meets all the criteria.
And I say that because sometimes we approve these things, and, or these things get approved, I'm not saying this one will or will not, but sometimes things get approved, they've been recommended for approval. The applicant is, you know, we have, we have outlined criteria. The applicant comes forward and meets those criteria, and, and we serve as judge and jury not necessarily of exactly what's going to happen on this site, and whether or not it's going to be, you know, use A versus use B from a, you know, the final business license that's issued. We're judging whether or not they met the criteria, so I've, you know, I've made it known in times past, I think we've got enough gas stations, but that's, that's not what we're deciding tonight, so. All right. I had a motion and a second, motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion on this item? City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. This plat recording has been approved. Item C. Are we good?
Yes, we've got a hard twenty-four minutes, so at some point.
Okay.
One-minute break.
We're almost, let's get through C, and then we'll just take a quick break before we start these first readings, that'll get us there. All right, item C, second reading would amend the city's code and award us the presumption of accumulation. City Attorney, read the orders a second time, but I'm lonely.
Ordinance number fifty-three twenty, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, amending chapter sixty-six, solid waste section sixty-six thirty-nine, to provide for review of presumptive charges, providing for public hearing, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Do we have any kind of a staff report on this, and Colin? Anything to add? All right, it was on the agenda, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance fifty-three dash twenty?
So moved.
I'll take Vice Mayor's motion. Can I get a second? Commissioner Hartman?
Second.
All right, we had a motion and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance fifty-three twenty is adopted. All right, we'll take a quick three-minute, five-minute break, so it is nine oh three now, so nine-tenish, we'll start back. All right, we are back, bring this meeting back to order. Okay, ordinance is first reading. Carrie is going to go through these, and she's going to do a speed trial through these, and Carrie, if you want to just take care of all of the other reading parts, and I'm going to sit back and listen to you for a while, so, please, take it away.
I'll go as fast as I can. Ordinance fifty-four twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach granting a non-exclusive franchise to Sandstone, Sandstone Site Services LLC to provide rolloff container collection and disposal of waste within the city of New Smyrna Beach, outlining franchisees' duties, providing terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number seventy-four twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach granting a non-exclusive franchise to Waste Management Inc. of Florida to provide construction and demolition debris removal services within the city of New Smyrna Beach, outlining franchisees' duties, providing terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number seventy-six twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending ordinance numbers eighty-nine oh six and sixty-three seventeen, sections three and four, to revise the billing methodology for residential and commercial user charges for collection of refuse, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number seventy-three twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article Six Development Design and Improvement Standards, section six oh four twelve signs, providing for off-site sandwich board signs in the MU Mixed Use Zoning District under certain conditions, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number seventy-five twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the code of ordinances, amending chapter two administration, Article One in general, section two dash one official seal adopted, and section two dash two official flag adopted, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number fifty-five twenty, an ordinance, ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point four five plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, adjacent to the west end of Live Oak Drive, addressed as eight oh four Bolton Road, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number fifty-six twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point four five plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, adjacent to the west end of Live Oak Drive, addressed as eight oh four Bolton Road, from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to City Low Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number fifty-seven twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point four five plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, adjacent to the west end of Live Oak Drive, addressed as eight oh four Bolton Road, from Volusia County R four A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R two A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number fifty-eight twenty, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point three nine plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Finley Street between Old Mission Road and Ingham Road, addressed as twelve oh six Finley Street, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number fifty-nine twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point three nine plus or minus acres of land located on the south side of Finley Street between Old Mission Road and Ingham Road, addressed as twelve oh six Finley Street, from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Medium Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point three nine plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Finley Street between Old Mission Road and Ingham Road, addressed as twelve oh six Finley Street, from Volusia County R four A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R two A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty-one twenty, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point one four plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Hickory Street, south of Washington Street, north of Julia Street, addressed as two oh two Hickory Street, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty-two twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point one four plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Hickory Street, south of Washington Street, north of Julia Street, addressed as two oh two Hickory Street, from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Medium Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty-three twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point one four plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Hickory Street, south of Washington Street, north of Julia Street, addressed as two oh two Hickory Street, from Volusia County R four A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R two A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty-four twenty, sixty-four twenty, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point two two plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Lydia Way, west of South Glenco Road, addressed as two four six four Lydia Way, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, twenty twenty. Ordinance number sixty-five twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point two two plus or minus acres of land located on the south side of Lydia Way, west of South Glenco Road, changing the future land use designation of point two two plus or minus acres of land located on the south side of Lydia Way, west of South Glenco Road, addressed as two four six four Lydia Way, from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Medium Density Residential. Providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, provided for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number sixty-six twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point two two plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Lydia Way, west of South Glenco Road, addressed as two four six four Lydia Way, from Volusia County R four A, urban single-family residential airport overlay to city R two A, single-family residential airport overlay. Providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number sixty-seven twenty, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point one nine plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Caroline Street, Carolyn Street, east of Corbin Park Road, south of Patty Road, addressed as four one six Carolyn Street. Providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number sixty-eight twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point one nine plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Carolyn Street, east of Corbin Park Road, south of Patty Road, addressed as four one six Carolyn Street, from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Medium Density Residential. Providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number sixty-nine twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point one nine plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Carolyn Street, east of Corbin Park Road, south of Patty Road, addressed as four one six Carolyn Street, from Volusia County R four A, urban single-family residential airport overlay to city R two A, single-family residential airport overlay. Providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number seventy twenty, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach point two plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, north of Live Oak Drive, addressed as seven seven zero Bolton Road. Providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number seventy-one twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point two plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, north of Live Oak Drive, addressed as seven seven zero Bolton Road, from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to City Low Density Residential. Providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Ordinance number seventy-two twenty, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point two plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Bolton Road, south of Pine Island Drive, north of Live Oak Drive, addressed as seven seven zero Bolton Road, from Volusia County R one A, urban single-family residential airport overlay to city R one COA, urban single-family residential airport overlay zoning district. Providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you.
Golf clap all around for you. All right, thank you, Carrie. Gentlemen, what I just heard was, August eleventh is gonna be a long meeting. Although a lot of those are standard annexations, so good job to the planning staff getting those all pushed through and queued up, so. All right, next item, item ten, boards and commissions. We have two boards to deal with. We're gonna begin with Economic Development Advisory Board. We have Board Chair Chase Urbig has resigned. His term expires June eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. So are there any nominations? Before we get to that, actually, are there any citizens still here? I talked to one, I know, but I really appreciate citizens who are willing to volunteer for these, and especially if they're willing to sit through this entire meeting until this point. So I know I talked to Steve Minkin, who I think has applied for this board. Any others? I see Lisa back there as an applicant for this board still, or, okay, so let's see, Lisa, thank you for staying. Any others that are an applicant for any of these boards? Just wanna acknowledge, I don't see, okay. All right, so thank you, thank you both for sticking it out for this whole meeting. Any nominations for this replacement? Vice Mayor?
We have to accept the resignation.
Make a motion to accept Mr. Urbig's resignation.
Second.
Yes. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloni?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do wish, Carrie, that we can investigate whether we have, I mean, it seems like an automatic, someone resides. Seems like a weird formality that we have to accept that and vote, but, all right, do I have any nominations on this board?
Mayor, I'm gonna nominate Carlton Exum.
I have one nomination for Carlton Exum.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a nomination. Mr. Minkin looks well-qualified. Minkin or Minkin?
I pronounce it Minkin, but I'm from the south, so, but he is too, I think, so. All right, any other nominations? We have two nominations, so I think we're gonna need the ballots. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all right. Still wanna revisit how we do this, gentlemen. I always, I forget until we do one of these. Feel like we could just take a vote or something, do it faster, I don't know. I'm sorry, I checked my own box. Thank you. Thank you. All right, you can just read the votes, yeah, you don't have to tally them up.
Okay. Vice Mayor Coloni voted for Stephen Minkin. Commissioner Sax voted for Stephen Minkin. Commissioner Hartman voted for Stephen Minkin. Commissioner McGurk voted for Carlton Exum, and Mayor Owen voted for Stephen Minkin, so, Stephen Minkin.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Look forward to your contributions on that board. I too liked Mr. Exum's resume as well, though I wish, wish we had more space on that board or some other board to get him on potentially, but, all right, congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Next board is the Historic Preservation Commission. We have three members whose terms have expired on May fourteenth, it seems. And so this new term would be through May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, so it's a three-year, three-year term. So we have three members, Marvin Dell Owens, Johanna Mahood, and, and Scauf. And they've each served one, Marvin Dell Owens has served one full term, and the other two have served each an unexpired term, so they stepped in, like we just did, they stepped in, so, Vice Mayor.
Just a question, we also have six people that have applied for this.
Yeah, I was about to point that out, yeah. So we've got three members who do wish to be reappointed. However, we also have three people, or, I'm sorry, six people who have applied, so do we have any nominations or reappointments?
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint the three existing members up for reappointment.
Second.
Okay, I had a motion to reappoint and a second. Quick discussion, I personally would like to see, it's funny, is I don't necessarily have someone that I want to see off, but I have a few on here that I, I think would be intriguing to see on, so I was gonna, I'd like to try to cycle. Deb Exum and possibly even Timothy Washington on, onto that board, but, I had a motion and a second, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I will nominate Deborah Exum.
So, we had a motion to reappoint and a second, so I think we need to, do we just?
So, hold on a second, hold on a second.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so, I'm making that appointment because historically what we've done is you don't remove people from a board that wish to continue to serve. However, if the city commission wants to move in a different direction from that, which, don't get me wrong, I've got people I'd love to serve on that board, on that list, but just as my policy, the people willing to serve who have been serving, I just, unless there's something egregious that they've done, I usually reappoint them. So if the commission is going in a different direction, I'm willing to rescind my motion, and we can have further discussion if you guys want or do something different.
And where I'm of a different opinion, all three of those people have not served a full term yet, so I thought they should at least get a shot at a full term.
One has, Marvin, Marvin Dell Owens, my notes say he's served a full term, yeah, one, one full term, so.
Question, they're, they're allowed two terms?
Term limits on this one, do you know off the top of your head, pop quiz?
After two terms, then the city commission, if they choose to waive that for them to serve a third term, then they may at that time.
Yeah. So, so, your point is well-made.
Well, what I'm gonna do at this time is I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay.
For further discussion, obviously.
All right.
Well, I just, I've reviewed all the people, I've seen what they've done, I've reviewed their attendance records. I feel, as I felt about this commission, there should be term limits, so the fact that they haven't reached their term, their full number, is relevant to a certain extent. My preference is that if, if you're content, any commissioners content with the three people on the board, they can just nominate all three. It just doesn't seem fair that we advertise we want people to volunteer for these boards and then say, that's it, we didn't really consider you.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, you know, you, you got a guy who showed up, who just got nominated and that's appointed to the EDAB board. And are we not gonna reward him for his ability to show up and get nominated the next time he comes up for nomination? So on that same token, my point, I agree that I would love, there's some names on that that I would love to see on there. I don't even know the three serving personally. However, they stepped up when they, when it was needed, and, you know, how you remove someone from a board because you want someone else in there, that's, that's, it's great, but you go down, it can become very political. So my policy has always been, unless something egregious is done, you recognize the fact that they stepped up and were willing to serve on a board, and they wanna continue, so. I don't know how you kick one off the board to say, well, this person stepped up, when?
Yeah, and different case with EDAB, obviously, because we had, you know, a vacancy to fill, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you raise an interesting point, and as I said, I, I don't have one that I want to see off, I have some ones that I want to see on, and so that.
And I agree with you.
That's the tough spot.
So who do we kick off?
I was hoping, y'all gotta make the nominations. I just told you who I wouldn't see on.
Mr. Mayor, for continuity and consistency's sake and for fairness, yes, I'd like to see diversity and, and new blood, but in all fairness, they haven't finished, they haven't termed out. They're willing to serve. Shouldn't we abide by the rules that we've set? I mean, I know they're, we can be flexible, but I'm willing to allow them to serve.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the question before us, I mean, I'll tell you in full transparency, and again, I, I don't, I didn't listen to, I haven't listened to any HPC meetings over the past little bit. We've had quite enough to deal with on our own plates. You know, I do know we had an issue that came before us not too long ago, that came via the HPC avenue, so I'm not saying any of these three were involved. I don't know how that all went, you know, how that went down, but I felt like we, you know, I felt like we might could have, you know, we might could have used some new perspectives on, on, on HPC. But again, I've, I've got nothing against any of these three, so, anyway. I've said enough.
So I'll make a motion to reappoint.
Have a motion to reappoint all three.
Second.
For being the motion maker to the second. All right, I have a motion to reappoint and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Sure, who made the second, I'm sorry?
Commissioner McGurk, the guy that made the first, first time.
All right, Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloni?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Really wanted to, all right, next item up, so thank you to those three, and I hope they never watch this video.
I hope they do.
Mayor and commission reports. We'll begin with the Vice Mayor.
All right, I have to find my right piece of paper here. First of all, the residents of the beachside are very happy that we're making positive changes there, and they look forward to us continuing. We've taken three really big steps, the third one we're working on, so they're, they're pretty content right now, but they don't want us to drop the ball, so we have to keep at it. Second thing is, last year we had zone commissioner meetings. I know we've had a lot of difficulty with various illnesses and viruses, but perhaps in the fall we could try to squeeze them in. I would love to have one. I was first last year, so whenever we're clear to start, I'm ready. And the last thing I have is, well, first of all, Marty Danaher, as you so eloquently stated, he's probably the most involved citizen in town that we've had that did not serve on a board or serve on the commission. He was truly dedicated for many years to making our government good. When it came up to appointments on the charter commission, which he really, really wanted to do, he said to me, I don't know if I'm gonna make it, please have a replacement in mind. But he was so dedicated that he just really wanted to follow through on that. So I'm glad we're gonna get it on the ballot, and I hope he realizes that. The last thing is, it's not overly important, but every time I hear a discussion about the AOB site, it is a ridiculous term for that piece of property. It was a temporary administrated office building for about three years. Before that, it was a UCC facility. Before that, it was a sewer plant. None of them are better terms. But I would like to find a way for us to reach out to the public and ask them to suggest new names for it. Perhaps our, Mr. Veskey can lead us in that. We just, we gotta have, maybe we could call it the boat ramp parking lot, maybe the no trailer lot, maybe we could call it anything, but we shouldn't.
How about the most controversial piece of land in town?
Yes.
Let's just call it Lightning Rod.
I would just like us to do that.
Lightning Rod Park.
Lightning Rod.
That's all I have to say.
Lightning Rod Park, that's the new name.
I like Barracuda.
I like, I could go with, I agree with you, anything's better than AOB. Any concerns if, if staff wants to have some fun with that? Wouldn't bother me if he wants to, over July, do some surveys and see what people would say.
Actually, how about Cuda Park? Because the old high school was right up the street.
You know, we had the name for it, and I just cannot remember, but we came up with the name.
Riverfront Promenade.
Yep, Promenade Park.
Sounds much like Riverside.
But let me tell you something, we've tried that now, and it's just not sticking, and so we should probably take the hint. Nobody uses it, we've tried to say that, it's not sticking, let's try some other name, Cuda Park, Barracuda Park, I like all those, Cuda, it was right around the, you know, we could.
You guys give us a name and we'll, we'll use it.
Well, I mean, the, the reality is, you can name it all you want, but until it becomes part of the vernacular, and so we'll know when we hit it, when we start using it, so. I'm gonna start calling it Cuda Park, y'all can do whatever you want. It's Cuda Park for me now.
I have no suggestions.
So you're saying that you see the vision of it as a park?
I'm saying for right now, it's Cuda Park. All right, good suggestion. Yeah, have, look, tell Phil to have some fun with that. The problem is, what I don't wanna do is reopen this whole notion to your point of, you know, some post that has a picture of it as, you know, something else, and then all of a sudden I get five thousand emails about, you know, what we're doing with this park, so. Let's just be careful, but, yeah. Commissioner Sax, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marty was a friend to me, a friend to the city, I hope a friend to you guys. I think he deserves a proclamation.
I, Kelly's very good at writing them, I would, I would kindly ask if Kelly could write one up, if you guys would support it. We, we've had many, many people engage with us, and as of late, you know, the old guys that used to come in and, and always question and always come to the podium and task us and task their, their fellow residents, but this, this guy's pretty special, so I, I would love to have a proclamation in his name. Also, if you guys would agree, if, I'm a, I'm a slave to ceremony, I, I enjoy these things, and I think our Charter Review Committee deserves our city pin and a coin. A small thing, our, our pin and coin.
Pin?
Our city pin.
Oh, okay.
I think all the members deserve that at least, I mean, that was a big task we, we asked of them. Now, if I could task staff on this side, Collin, I was going to just call casually George Recktenwald. An, an FWC officer came to me, he's an acquaintance, and we used to have numbers on our walkovers, and if anybody had an emergency, they could, they could name the street, because I think street numbers or some type of designation was on the walkovers. We have nothing like that now. If there's an emergency, any of our agency's first responders, it would help if, if a person on the beach could turn to the, to the walkover or anywhere on the beach and see a number designation, they could say, "We're at this location." If we could recommend to them, we did have them once before, I think it would, you know, it's a small safety measure that might help. If, if you don't mind making a call, or if you don't want to, I, I can call them.
We're going to meet with him on the 25th, Vice Mayor and I, so.
Okay, and also, we don't have a handicap walkover between, my gosh, between 3rd and 27th. The only one is at 27th. It used to be at 8th, 9th was destroyed, so they made 8th the handicap walkover, and then that was destroyed. It would be very easy for them to put the ramp back at the very end, if we could ask them to, it's the smallest repair, to, to make the end of 8th Avenue a ramp at the end. Cause they put, they replaced it with stairs, but they have a handicap rail and, I mean, it, it's a small ask for the county. And most importantly, we, we never really discussed parking fines, because it turned out our, our attorneys said that we were capped at $33, but yet our fines are $35. I think that unfortunately, the, I hope it's not prohibitive, but I think we should raise the parking fine. People are just going nuts parking wherever they want all over our city. And that even with Chief's co- uh, Parking Enforcement staff, they're writing all day. So, I wonder, should we raise the parking fines? Should we direct staff to, to explore, any way we can do that?
So, my question for you is, staff has explored it, and they came back and told us that the state has capped that at 30 plus a provisional $3, it has to go to the Special Firefighter Relief Fund or something, if we wanted to do that. So, I'm okay with running a file with the state, but I guess my question for you is, what's your risk tolerance when some attorney steps out of their Maserati, gets a hundred dollar ticket on our soil, and then sues the mess out of the city, cause we're in violation of state ordinances?
The, the question then becomes, why is it 35 and we're capped at 35?
That is a great question, that I have asked every state rep I have seen since we had that conversation, and I'm gonna continue to, to press that point with our state representatives. I think we need some help from them, some top cover at the state level, that gives us the provisions within, even if it's just within carved out special zones, we've gotta get some help, and I'm sure we're not the only beachfront community, so I'm gonna try to lobby my fellow mayors in Cocoa and some other places to deal with these same issues, to help me lobby at the state level, to give us some provisions, so that we can do that and not run a file with the state. Now, we could take the other approach, and I've said before publicly that I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that, and letting this fight play out in the court of public opinion, but frankly, we got a lot of stuff playing out in the real courts at the moment, and so I'm a little worried about our burn rate on legal fees, and I don't know that I wanna sign up for some other battle with the state and, and all those attorneys. So, that's just my, my opinion, so I guess I submit all that back to you as a question and say, "Where do you wanna go with this?" We, staff has told us what we can do per state, and I can't even explain the $2 at this point, so let's just let that go, but what do, what do you wanna do?
I think the fines should be higher.
I think we all agree with that.
Well, I, I think we should approach the state then, if that's what it takes.
Yeah.
Our, our city is besieged, it will continue to get much worse.
I completely agree, and so I, I am, I am talking to the state, I encourage you, reach out to your state reps, make sure they know your feelings as a citizen, as a commissioner, however you'd like to do that, Senator Wright, Senator Leek, you know, every other state rep you can get ahold of, so. Cause that's where that change is gonna have to come from.
I'll approach it from that end. And I'm through, thank you.
If, if somebody makes a motion tonight, or some other meeting to raise it to a hundred bucks, I'm not saying I'd say no, I'm just saying, we need to go into that eyes wide open that legally, we can't do that.
Then just quickly, how did we derive a hundred dollars for the boat, uh, truck, uh, truck trailer combos?
So. I explained that there are caps in Chapter 318 of Florida statutes. In Chapter 316, they talk about some limited areas where we can exceed those caps. Relying on home rule, we, we came up with an idea, if we're targeting a very specific area, then it's almost like we haven't been preempted by the state, which is why we talked about the specific boat ramp issue. So that's why I felt comfortable pushing, pushing it a little bit in terms of the boat ramps, because we were addressing a specific problem that appeared not to have been dealt with by the state. I mentioned to y'all previously, that if there's a specific area that we can narrow it down, I would explore that. However, right now, as you know, we have Charter Review. When we end this meeting tomorrow, I start working on a lease template, continuing the Charter Review, starting the Charter Review ballot ordinance. My number one priority right now is Charter Review. So. I ask for some time, so that we can review what we have on the books, I already am aware of the problem with the $35. I'm asking you for the fall, please give me some time to review what we have on the books and what we can do, how we can strengthen it.
Sure, Carrie, absolutely. If you would, with approval from my colleagues, we, there is a target area in mind for me, and that is the walkovers on, at our beach ramps. Cars park every which way, right in front of the walkover, and I rarely ever see them get sighted. Maybe the code, uh, Parking Enforcement is ramping up, and hopefully we can get them on Hill Street to see the situation there, cause it's, it's pretty bad, I mean, you can't even get, you can't walk to a walkover, cause people are parking in the middle of what is a road. So, Jeep, if you, it's a target rich environment, you know, just for ticketing. But, I mean, that's a, an egregious violation, if we could target those areas. That, that's all, you know, when, when, when you have time.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the, I think that's the thing, is we're, and I'm gonna speak to it a little bit, but we, we have pushed through a lot on top of everything else, so.
I agree.
I, I think we can only, we can only get so much quality work, and, you know, if it were just as easy as changing, you know, striking through a number, if we didn't have this overarching issue at the state level, if it were just striking through a number in ordinance, then, you know, the bottleneck wouldn't be carried, the bottleneck would just be pushing it through, but right now, the bottleneck is making sure we've dotted every I, crossed every T, and we just only have so much capacity to, to do that, so. But in the meantime, again, I think if we can get some top cover from the state and some clarity from the state, that makes our job easier. That makes it where we're not having to walk some tightrope, we can actually just, you know, have a lot more, a lot more clarity on that, so.
No, I, I agree, Mayor, but at the same time, our residents are besieged, you know.
I hear ya, I've stood in their living rooms, my.
As part of the, as part of the whole regime of Parking Enforcement.
I, I hear ya, and I, I was dismayed to learn that we were capped out where we were, I mean, I'm, that's not staff's fault, but I, yeah, I was a little frustrated with that. I, I don't, I don't know who's infinite wisdom that came out of, so. Wanted to go back, you proposed two things, and we'll come down the line, so the pin and the coin for CRC, I, I don't see any issues with that, unless somebody objects. Proclamations on, for the citizens, I, I've, I don't know that I've, I've asked for any proclamations really, but is there any protocol? Is there any reason we wouldn't do that, it doesn't bother me, I, but I don't wanna set some precedent either, where.
Any examples of what we've done, we just haven't done many, it's usually to honor our citizens.
Yeah, I know we're trying to, but with this, I'm a lot more comfortable, so, any, any objections, any concerns with proclamations?
No, I mean, we did it for a football player.
That is true. Okay. Alright, so, good to go on those items.
Thanks.
Alright, Commissioner McGurk, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, first thing I wanted to do is thank staff and everybody who was involved, including the commission supporting this setup tonight. I think it's fantastic, considering the COVID cases are starting to jump up again. Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate all the hard work and the effort that staff puts in to getting something like this done. And on that note, I just wanted to bring up that, I could tell by looking at staff, we are working them to death. I, we have a lot of good things that we're trying to accomplish, I'm not questioning that, all I'm saying is, let's focus on what we have on the table, and let's be careful not to bring new issues to the table until we can get some of this stuff off their plate. It really is, it really is important that we get good quality work from our staff, and that we don't overburden them with our issues. We have a lot of issues, and I think they have a lot on their plate. So, let's, let's just be mindful of all the different things that we wanna do and accomplish, and what that effect is on our staff, cause I think we're, we're working them hard, and we're running late meetings, and we're all trying to accomplish good things. It's all good intended, but let's make sure that we don't, we don't, we don't overwork them, thank you.
So, I met with Suzanne and Rebecca from the Dream Green Volusia team that was at our last meeting, and they had some very good ideas. They gave me about four of them that they were basically wanting to concentrate on. The first one is cigarette butts are recyclable, and they contain plastics, which I had no idea that even happened. And for a hundred dollars, you can put a container where they deposit their cigarette butts, you collect them, bag them, and the company actually pays the postage to send them to them. So, there was that, there were some other things with, along with restaurants, and even water filling stations, where we have water fountains everywhere, maybe in the future, we should couldn't, look at converting to a water bottle filling station, especially along the beachside. So what I would like to do is, I don't know if we have a green committee or a sustainable committee within the city?
Not at this point.
Yeah, and, and following Commissioner McGurk's comments, I, I hate to do that, but.
I swear I didn't know.
If, the rest, if you don't mind, I'm gonna do a little more research on this and look into a little bit more, and maybe bring it back at a lower level and see if there are some things that we could do, maybe get some participation with Faba or even Canal Street, if they want to participate in this, because you could certainly advertise on these cigarette butt recycling things. So I think that's something that we, I mean, we've taken a step with the straws and the single-use plastics, I just don't wanna stop there, I think we need to continue that effort. And they're very passionate about it and very helpful, and so if, if you guys don't mind, I'm just gonna pursue some of that a little along, and I'll just keep you updated on what's going on, and not try to involve any staff whatsoever. Um, the other thing was, Friday, we met with the ministerial, the West Side Ministerial Alliance, to kinda talk about, where do we go from here, what's next? The chief and Collin and I were there, and. It was a very good conversation in, into the fact that nobody's pointing fingers, we just, they just want some participation. They wanna be a little bit more involved, and whether the involvement is just some way to have notification of stuff other than social media, because it's not a, uh, social media's not prominent in the West Side. So, Collin, I, I think will probably bring forth some, some of the things that we talked about at, at a later time. But, one of the things that I kinda got out of this was, this seems to be more, it's not just a West Side issue, it's more of a global or citywide issue. So, I hate to put burden on the mayor, but maybe going forward, he may be wanna be more involved in this and take the lead on it, since they're looking for across, you know, crossing the bridge and crossing the railroad tracks, and how do we do the entire community on some of their, some of their issues and stuff like that, so. I'd be happy to do it, but if, you know, I, I think maybe that, it would be more encompassing if we did it on a citywide basis, if we did it holistically, rather than, you know, just the zone meeting or just a zone commissioner. So, I'd put that forth, you know, if, I can give you the minutes from the meeting and you can go from there. But they had some good ideas, they had some good suggestions that I think will be very positive in the future, it's just gonna take some working through, so. I'm sure Collin's gonna bring us something from what he discussed, so it was a very nice meeting, and I was happy to do that. I'll continue to do my one-on-ones out there with some local people, so, but the Ministerial Alliance, I think would, would probably be more beneficial to have, you know, the mayor present at that time, so, I don't wanna put too much on your plate.
My plate's so full.
Cause I know you're overworked, too.
My plate's so full, I wouldn't notice if you added something, so, let's just, let's just do it.
But, you know, and if I can help, I'm happy to help, so.
No, I'm, I'm happy to do that, I never wanna, you know, get in anybody's zone or, or, you know, too involved, but I'm, I'm happy to do that, and, you know, be, be a part of that conversation, for sure.
If I could add to Commissioner Hartman's statement.
Are you finished, or?
Yeah, I've seen.
Last night, I had the pleasure of, of going to the neighborhood council meeting, a nice lady who's a resident here, Karen Francis, has been very involved in trying to bring people together, and I'll try to hook up with her and, and see that we can get that initiative going. It is global.
What was that name?
Karen, I believe her last name is Francis.
Yeah, I've already reached out to her and, and is trying to work a date to where we can get together and talk to her, I reached out after the last meeting. Those were the two people, the groups that I reached out to after the last meeting, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I can.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll continue to reach out to her and see if we can't get together, I met with some others in a subdivision south of Glencoe to discuss some of their issues, so. I'll reach out to her and then. We've agreed to meet, we just haven't set a date yet, so.
If it helps, it was just a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, I know, she goes to the same church I do, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. You're all finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. So, three things. So the Canal Street event, you heard someone mention it, actually disappointed there weren't others here to speak to it, and I don't know if any of you all heard from any merchants, but I left, we had an event that night, I guess Charter Review, and, but I left here and went straight to Canal Street and walked around, everyone was kinda buttoning up, it was right at the, right at the end, but I went in numerous different restaurants, went in the hub, talked to different people that had tents set up, and overwhelmingly rants and raves about the event. Fantastic feedback about the event from those people that were on the street, I had people that I stopped and talked to on the street that were here from, you know, one lived here, and the other two or three were from, you know, Edgewater, Port Orange, and they heard about the event, and they're like, "Look, this is exactly what we've been looking for," and they were standing there, and they had just had dinner in one of the restaurants, they all had bags from one of the shops, I mean, it was like the, the picture perfect, this is exactly what we, you know, want on, on Canal Street, out there frequenting our merchants. They said there was higher participation from merchants, a lot of the merchants close, I guess, usually before that time. But they said there was higher participation by the merchants in this event than any other historic closures that they had done for Canal Street. So high participation rate, the right amount of people, and again, I know I was there at the very end, but they, they said they never felt like it was crowded, or, you know, that typical like, you know, shoulder-to-shoulder vibe, it was always pretty open. And I talked to one particular merchant, and I told her to email everyone, I was like, "Hey, make sure my commissioners hear the story," so I don't know if she emailed everyone or not, I don't think I got it, but one particular merchant said it was their. it was their best day even pre-COVID, it was one of their best sales days, and they had just pulled a tent out on the street, and just, that was how they were, were making the sales and, and drawing in awareness to their shop. So, I think that event is successful. I'm hoping the, you know, the numbers stay at a point where we can continue that, I think, pushing, you know, trying to push some awareness around, you know, wearing masks and everything, but I'll tell you, I saw groups of people, but there was a lot of space between the groups of people. So, I think they did have a few things, and I don't know who did the setup tear down, I don't know if we were involved or not, but I think they did have a few things. They had some, you know, it's an awkward time to close, and so they had some, some issues with when they closed, and there were people moving barricades and driving around and stuff like that. So, I think we'll, we'll work out those kinks hopefully as we, as we keep going. So, and I think they also may have used the police department logo to try to put up no parking signs, so. I think y'all called them out on that, so, we'll get all that figured out, but overall, I think it was a great, great event. So, the two other things I had were, and really, I think Commissioner McGurk was reading my notes over here, because I swear we didn't talk about this beforehand, but I did just want to recognize, and I talked about it earlier in the meeting, that, you know, I don't, I don't know everybody's backgrounds up here, but I will tell you, I, you know, my entire career, I've spent on that side of the table. I've spent as a staff member, not as a board member, but as a staff member that's, you know, been the one to sit in the meetings and have to have a stack of documents this high, to have an answer to, you know, the one-of-a-million questions that might come out of the board and be prepared for 100 different things, and then have the board, you know, go off on some tangent and make some decision and say, "Hey, can we do this?" And all of a sudden, you know, you're mentally processing, "Crap, I just had, you know, 100 things to do, and now I have 150 things because they want this too," but none of that went away, you know, because the board never once in my experience ever said, "Hey, don't do that, do this," it's always just do this. And so, this isn't, this isn't, because staff has said anything to me, I just want to make that very clear, nobody's come to me and bit my ear. I just, this is all I've ever known is, is to operate on that side of the table. So, I want to take a moment, recognize, staff has put out some tremendous work, that homeless workshop we had, needed another hour, but that's not staff's fault. But they've put out some tremendous work, that briefing that we put together, I said that we, that you all put together on the Pottinger, fantastic work, answered a ton of my questions. You know, the Charter Review, that's a ton of work that has gone into, that goes into that. I know it seems simple when it comes out this end, but, you know, you've got an entire, you've got five people, some of them are, you know, read very, very closely, I'm pointing at you, Commissioner Hartman. So, knowing that, you know, every typo is going to be critiqued, every, you know, that's a hot, we hold staff to a high quality of, of work, and they consistently put a high quality of work out. So, I really want to give a kudos to staff. We're on the homestretch heading into a break for July, not that that means they all take off the entire month by any stretch, but a break from meetings for a good bit of the month, it's well deserved. I hope you all have a chance to, to play some catch-up, and, and my commitment to you all is, for the back half of the year, look, we, we all have a lot we want to get done, we've laid a lot out there, but, you know, my commitment is, I want to try to help prioritize some of this. So, as we hand down things, you know, we, we, we help you prioritize where these, where they fall in the pecking order, because, you know, frankly, I've left jobs when I, I didn't get the recognition I needed that, "Hey, I'm just overworked," and it had nothing to do about pay, it had everything to do with work-life balance, and, and a board that didn't get that. So, and again, this isn't a response to anybody saying anything to me, this is me trying to proactively address this. And so, genuinely, sincerely, to each of you, Chief, Kelly, Carrie, your whole team, Kelly, your whole team, Chief, all the police department, I mean, they're doing, you know, yeoman's work out there, especially today more than ever. Brian, your whole team, building and planning, Collin, all of, all of the team members that report through you, really, really good work. COVID, I mean, we're in tough times. This is tough times to be leading a team, and you guys are all just doing a fantastic job, and we're really, really, really proud to represent you up here, and so you make us all proud, so thank you. And that leads me to a second question, and that is, one key position that I know is still vacant, and I don't think it's our fault, but the Development Services Director, so we gave, we gave Brian a promotion, and then we say, "But by the way, you actually just got a second job," because we didn't hire anybody to backfill your old one. So, I know we had someone that we were recruiting, and that kind of got paused, and, but I just want to make sure, you know, I know we have budget concerns, but that's a budgeted position, it is a necessary position. I want to make sure there's no holdup from our side. To me, we should be pushing hard to get that position filled, because with everything else we're trying to push through, we need all the high-quality help that we can get. And I know y'all are going to find high-quality help, so my, my challenge to you all is, for that position, I think it's a priority, I think we should be pushing to try to get it filled. So, you know, I just want to make sure you didn't feel like we were, at least me, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't want you to feel like we were trying to hold up, you know, for budget concerns or whatever, because I think we got to get it filled, that's just, that's just my opinion, so. Any, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I also, I, you know, I've talked to city manager, I think there was a lot of concerns a month or two ago with this virus issue. I think a lot is still undecided, but I think we see, we, we, we're seeing enough to where we can make some decisions, and I would also support getting that position filled as soon as possible, especially if you have someone in your sights that you like, and you would like to fill that position with, you have my blessing to go ahead and do that, and, and I'd like to get that done as soon as possible.
Go ahead.
Mayor, we have two positions. We got the Development Services Director and the Economic Development CRA. The Economic Development CRA, yesterday, he accepted the offer, he will start on August the 10th. The Development Services, Brian has been in touch with him. The last time that he talked to him, I think he was just because of the COVID and because of his house, so I don't know if you have any updates?
No, we can touch base, we had a great candidate, he had young children, we were moving towards a hire right bef, right as things were hitting the worst possible time, put your house on the market and say, "Hey, kids, we're going to go to school in Florida." So, we'll touch base, though, and really appreciate the support, and hopefully we can work it out with that candidate or somebody else.
Yeah, and I'll defer to you all on, is it worth waiting on the right candidate versus telling that candidate, "Hey, now's your chance, if not, we're moving on," you know, that, I haven't seen any resumes, so I totally defer to you all. I just want to make sure you didn't feel like you had roadblocks from this side, because I think it's important that we try to fill some of those key positions. Not saying we blow the budget, let's keep holding back on capital and everywhere else we can, but I don't think key staff are where we want to really be making the, making the sacrifices at this point with everything else we're trying to get accomplished, so.
And the only position right now that we're waiting for this gentleman that, in Alabama. Besides that, I think we'll have all the position filled when we fill the Development Services.
Okay. All right. That was all the comments that I had. City Manager, report.
Reports are self-explanatory, just a few things that I want to point out. The summer camp kicked off on the 15th, we had 55 kids with almost like eight or nine counselors. So, so far, everything is going just the way it was planned. We're meeting with the county manager on the 25th, Vice Mayor and I. Commissioner Hartman mentioned about the meeting with Reverend Harley. I will provide a summary of, of our meeting with him, in terms of the items we discussed with him, and also my, my plan for the next step. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions from the manager's report that was in the agenda, seeing none, city clerks report?
No report.
All right. I again want to point out, we just approved minutes from the May 26th meeting, I think, like, that gap is, she's going to start approving, like, by the end of the meeting, we're going to be approving the minutes from that meeting, I think, so. City Attorney, we've already covered you, anything else? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you all.